Heavenly Father, we thank you for our many blessings, including the right and the freedom to meet this evening. So that our voices may be heard, we ask for your strength, guidance, and wisdom, and that we trust all will be treated with dignity and respect in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum this evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for showing up. Any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is review and approval over the minutes of November 7th, 2018. I will make a motion to approve those minutes.
No movement.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. I don't see any unfinished business on the agenda, so we'll move into our first application, exception request X-18-002.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The application before you this evening is a request for an exception to the five-to-one lot width-to-length ratio rule that's in the subdivision ordinance. What you have before you is a tax map showing the property ADA 61. This property was left in a will to several heirs. The heirs actually own property that's adjacent to it, and I can show you here with the X's where those properties are. Five of the six heirs own property. The will stipulated that the property was to be divided in equal shares among the heirs. So the next slide here shows how that is going to be accomplished. Some of the parcels can be adjusted into the front parcels without violating any of the subdivision ordinance requirements, but three of the parcels would result in that five-to-one ratio exception requirement. So staff is recommending approval of this. The will does provide for equal shares of the parcel. The five of six parcels are directly adjacent to the property, and it makes the most sense to simply adjust the land into their existing parcels. Due to the size and configuration of the heirs' lots and the willed parcel, there's no way to adjust three of those lots without exceeding that five-to-one length-width ratio. So staff is recommending approval so that they can proceed with the lot line adjustments as shown.
Thank you. Wanda, any questions or comments for Wanda? With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion passes. We'll move to the next item on the agenda this evening, which is a public hearing for a special use permit, SUP-18-001. Let me first make a statement here on the protocol for the public hearing. Staff will make their presentation. After staff makes a presentation, the applicant will have 10 minutes to respond, or make, excuse me, to make their presentation, at which point I will open up for public comment. I will go over this one time, that you will have three minutes to speak. If you haven't already signed up, please make sure that you do. When you come up to the podium, please state your name, your voting district. If you don't know that, that's fine. Your address will be fine, and you'll have three minutes. On the podium, you'll see a light. You'll have three minutes. When it's green, when it's yellow, you'll have one minute. When it turns red, I would ask that you immediately stop your comments at that point. We will cut the microphone off. We want to give everybody a chance to speak this evening. If you represent a group, we will allow you five minutes. Please state the group name, if you would, please. We want to give everybody a chance to speak this evening. We have a capacity issue this evening. I would ask that, once you are done your comments, people will be coming in. I will defer to our public safety officers to tell me if we are over our capacity. I would ask that you be courteous and step out of the room so that we maintain a safe environment here in this facility. We have folks at the Fire Marshal, or, excuse me, at the Marshal Center that will come over and speak, have the opportunity to speak as well. Once we finish up the public comment period, the applicant will have a chance for rebuttal for five minutes. Then we will close the public hearing. It is my intention to stick to the agenda this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Patrick White, Spotsylvania County Planning Department. This case is SUP-18-1. It is a special use application for a solar energy facility. The site is located in western Spotsylvania. It's over 5,200 acres, and it is projected to provide 400 megawatts of solar power. The properties depicted, both on your screen and in the top-right zoning map, as you can see from the map, the subject properties are all zoned A3 or agricultural 3. The properties all have a future land use designation of either rural, residential, or agricultural and forestal land use per the comprehensive plan. I don't know how familiar people are with solar power. I have just a few slides on photovoltaics that I thought might be beneficial. Generally speaking, a photovoltaic panel is a preassembled collection of photovoltaic cells that are produced from a number of manufacturers using different materials. The applicant has identified that they plan to use two manufacturers, or two types of panels, known as Jinko panels and Persolar Series 6 panels. The panels themselves are strung together into strings. Those strings are racked onto basically a crossbeam into a row. The rows are equipped with hardware that allows them to tilt and follow the sun so that they can maximize their exposure to the sun. The rows themselves are supported by steel pylons, which are driven into the ground, typically about eight feet. The applicant's GDP depicts a solar array, and the array consists of six subarrays. You'll see them on the diagram in the top-right corner. A row itself is about 90 PV panels. This array feeds a dual inverter. All of these are connected to those inverters. The inverters themselves convert what is collected as DC or direct current power into AC power, and it is then transmitted to basically a mini substation that is on the applicant's property. At that mini substation, the energy is collected and measured, and then transmitted to the Dominion substation itself, where it goes onto the power grid and is sold for later Looking at the GDP, you can pick out those inverters quite easily. They're little blocks, and you can make out them. Drew three arrows to kind of point them out. Their staff has recommended that condition, that they're set back at least 400 feet from any property line, because they do produce a small electronic hum, and they're often accompanied by generators. The GDP depicts a lot more than just inverters. The GDP is the general plan of the proposal. It stands for Generalized Development Plan. It's not a final design. If the special use is approved, detailed site engineering is submitted to the county for review in something called Site Plan Review. Site Plan Review process is where the county verifies the details, the engineering with county codes, laws, and conditions that may be passed pursuant to the special use permit. Following the site plan permit is something called Building Permit Review. Building Permit Review looks further into details to verify that what's actually being constructed meets building codes, electrical codes, et cetera. The GDP also points out significant points of interest, including access points, setbacks, buffers, resource protection areas, some stormwater collection features that are potential. And like I mentioned, depicts other points of interest. I pulled this excerpt from the GDP because you can see a cemetery that was located on-site, and a buffer that was around it, and an abandoned gold mine, and make out many other details. This in purple here is the potential stormwater catchment pond. These blue lines with the black outline are resource protection areas. I'd like to talk firstly about access to the property. There's three points of access on the north side of this proposed SUP. Access 9 is leftmost on the screen. That's in Orange County. That access is restricted access. It would be only for emergency services. Spotsylvania County has contacted Orange, and they're okay with it being only for emergency access. The second access in the middle of the screen is called Entrance 1. It runs down an existing Dominion corridor, transmission line corridor. The, that corridor fronts on Orange Plank Road. Another access fronts on Orange Plank Road, and that's Entrance 2, or Access 2. Access 2 is proposed via an existing road called Windy Acres Lane. It then picks up on the Buckland Road. Staff is recommending a condition that this be a limited access path. We'd like to, we're proposing to restrict that no vehicles larger than two axles be allowed on this path to reduce impacts from heavy vehicles that may otherwise use this path for construction. There's two paths on the south side, two accesses on the south side. The leftmost, Entrance 8, is accessed through Craig's Church Lane. That access would entail an extension of Craig's Church Lane. Like Access 2, staff is recommending that that be a limited access road, restricting any vehicles to only two axles. Entrance 3 would serve as the permanent and primary access. Entrance 3 is on West Catharpen, where the property has a little over 6,000 feet of frontage that they will own should this SUP go through. Access 3 is the one that we would envision most used, and that would be used in the long term, the principal entrance, if you will. The GDP depicts that there are multiple land, or developable areas on the GDP. Each of them can be accessed from any of the entrance points. So the internal site of the collective solar energy facility that we're presenting tonight, you could enter on one access point, and you can get anywhere on-site. It may meander to get there, but it's doable. Staff is, we did receive an estimate from the applicant. They noted that 40% of the estimated construction traffic is expected to use Orange Plank on the north, and 60% via West Catharpen on the south. Those estimates include an estimated 467 daily employee trips. They estimate a total of 70 daily delivery trips between sites A, B, and C. Now, there's a caveat to that, that staff is recommending some additional conditions, which we expect will drive, will lower those numbers, and I will touch on that momentarily. In the current construction access plan that the applicant's provided, it does note that there is a potential for a new left-turn lane at Access 2, a new right-turn lane at Access 3, and, like I said, the extension of Craig's Church Lane at Access 8. As I mentioned, it's possible that, due to staff conditions, that turn lane improvement at Access 2 may not be necessary. The current construction and access evaluation also provides estimated trips due to the construction. We asked our traffic engineering staff to use those trips and estimate what, if any, level of service decreases would occur, or could be expected to occur. We did find numerous, basically, both of those roads would experience levels of service decreases. They would fall to levels of Cs and Ds, but it's important to note that following construction, these would return to normal. Staff's requested that the applicant provide further details regarding the construction traffic impacts and give us a final traffic mitigation plan. That final mitigation plan should include a school bus avoidance plan to limit construction and employee traffic access during high or peak busing hours between the times of 6:10 to 8:40 in the AM, and 2:45 to 4:30 in the PM during, when schools are in session. Also, a plan for onsite parking areas, off-site shuttle areas, and shuttling of at least 70% of the workforce. Now, that's a large, that can have a large effect on that 467 daily employee trips, which we're looking to see in this provided plan. Item C of that plan would be a plan coordinated with VDOT to video document those construction hall routes, including the pavement conditions along those routes, including the driveway corners where folks' driveways intersect with those routes, and the aprons of any roads used for access to the site. Lastly, a fourth element to that requested plan was details of the temporary traffic control measures.
Let me turn it over to Mr. Troy Tigner, our zoning administrator, for this next portion of the presentation. Thank you, Patrick. Troy Tigner, zoning administrator and director of Zoning and Environmental Codes. It's a large project for construction purposes, so the county engaged the applicant to provide a overall conceptual plan, which detailed out as a Zone E of one of the first sections. Next slide. Thank you. This is an overall plan here that shows how a section will have erosion sedimentation controls around the perimeter near environmentally sensitive areas. There will be upslope of that, a silt fence barrier, and the little structures that you see around the property will be sediment basins that are engineered design features, where water will be directed that will temporarily be held in those structures so that the sediment can settle out before the water from a storm is released. Next slide. We're going to go through a series of photographs. One of the first things that you'll see here is how the perimeter controls are installed around the site exterior. Then the silt barrier will continue along the environmentally sensitive resource protection areas. And once substantial perimeter barriers are installed, then you'll see the stormwater basins will be constructed, which is indicated by the yellow highlight, and then upslope, you'll have more structures constructed. Each one of these structures can only contain about three acres, so it will be a lot of them out there on-site. These structures will be overdesigned, and they will be cleaned out from sediment that accumulates in them at a greater frequency than required by state law, per the conditions in the special use permit proposal. Then, as the yellow area would be, where you would start to see grading. Grading has initially changed from the first concept plan to a much more reduced earth movement. The solar panels will be installed more so along the natural contours of the land versus heavy earth movement. In between there, there's also a soil amendments are added, and then seed will be drill seeded to provide for greater germination of the seed more quickly before any of the pylons are proposed to be installed. Some of the things we talked about here, the stormwater plans are, have been reviewed by a third-party engineering. We have procured third-party professional engineers, three firms. We have recommended a limitation of 400 acres of land disturbance in the aggregate. Inspections will be conducted by county staff and the three engineering firms. Inspection costs to the county have been addressed by a recent fee schedule proposal that has been approved by the board supervisors. Here you see a slide that shows some of the minimum code requirements, and some of the things I talked about earlier. Some of the salient issues are cleaning out of the sediment basins at a 25% capacity versus a 50% capacity that's provided by state code. These 25% capacities will be marked on the risers, which are concrete columns inside the sediment basin, so it'll be very easy to tell when the basin is at 25% capacity. There'll be a responsible land disturber on-site. Responsive personnel will be on-site for a ready response force for any erosion issues and failures. That is also part of the conditions in the conditional use permit, I'm sorry, special use permit. We're also projecting that we would use, for the first time, drone technology to survey the area and have video ability of areas that may be on steep slopes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. The county is well aware of the importance of this, these erosion and control concerns. Apart from just managing them because it's environmentally safe, another significant reason that it's on our radar is because we've identified, or the applicant has provided our studies, that have identified a potential for two living species that reside in those waters, one of which is called a dwarf wedge mussel. It's a federal and state endangered mussel since 1990. It lives in silt-free streams and is known to inhabit the Poe River. The Poe River is downstream from this site. The Yellow Lance has not been protected yet, but probably will be in the future, and it shares a similar habitat. The introduction of sediment into waterways on the property would negatively affect these mussels. Staff, along with ENS, has recommended conditions which should mitigate impacts on their habitats. This image, let me use my mouse a little bit here. So the dwarf wedge mussel habitat's kind of shown in that green area, and that's the Poe River. And as we trail further to the west along that blue line, we had Robertson's Run and then McCracken Creek. McCracken Creek is known, or is identified as a threatened and endangered species water due to the potential habitat of those. I'm going to touch on it in the next slide. Okay, I have another photo there. The report that was provided, Threatened and Endangered Species Assessment, also identified a, an off-site incident where a rare loggerhead shrike was identified. It's also known as the butcher bird. That's the bird on the very top image. It was identified about 3,000 feet away. It's nonetheless a threatened species, although we're not expecting any further, well, its habitat is already vastly, you know, gone. It was, the property was already timbered. The northern long-eared bat, sorry, folks, let me continue.
Could I have order, please? Thank you.
Yes, that was my fault. The northern long-eared bat may also reside in the area, although no habitats or roosted trees were identified. Staff has recommended conditions, or a condition to train, that the applicant train their staff to identify and report any potential sightings of those species. The small world Pagonia is a perennial orchid.
Hold on, Patrick. Could I have order, please? I'm trying to hear the presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
The small world orchid is a perennial orchid. It's classified as threatened by the United States Fish and Wildlife Service and endangered by the Virginia Department of Agricultural and Consumer Services. There is only one likely habitat that was identified via survey of the property. No actual orchids were found. The survey was coordinated through the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Staff has conditioned that this small habitat area be preserved. It is identified and preserved on the GDP. The Department of Conservation and Recreation also noted concerns over the fragmentation of existing forests. Efforts to mitigate forestal fragmentation are proposed through the use of wildlife compatible fencing at regular intervals and at prescribed locations. However, the large loss of existing forested areas from timber harvests operations has already occurred. From a cultural perspective, the applicant provided archaeological and architectural surveys that were conducted with the cooperation of the Virginia Department of Historical Resources. Those surveys examined above-ground and below-ground resources for potential inclusion into the Virginia Landmark Register or the National Register of Historic Resources. Although a number of resources were identified, there were generally no significant impacts. Two cemeteries were identified and are protected. One railhead was identified, which staff has proposed to be provided within a trail easement for future trail construction. The National Park Service provided comments to us, noted that an agreement exists preserving the existing intersection of Orange Plank Road and Brock Road, and notes that a permit would be required from the National Park Service for commercial traffic on Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania National Military Park roads. One of the things that I think a lot of people have been interested in are the buffers and the setbacks for a case like this. I'd like to talk about those briefly. The applicant provided in their GDP a, basically their proposal for buffering and setbacks. They also provided a view shed study, which would depict the contextual views from select sites. Staff has recommended some conditioned changes to those. We're recommending that the prescribed setbacks and buffering go as follows. That prescribed setbacks are 50 feet, except fencing, burms, landscaping, roads, bridges, utility poles are exempt. No trees shall be removed from any 50-foot setback or any 50-foot buffer, except for exotic species removal, hand clearing of dead or dying trees, and clearing for any ingress, egress, or infrastructure connections. Inverters and generators shall be set back 400 feet. Any property adjacent to the site containing a home triggers a 350-foot setback of solar arrays and supporting structures along that shared property line. The buffer plantings have a, kind of a similar, similar concept. Basically, the buffers, any house that was, okay, I'll start. A residential structure within 300 feet, which is not separated by an existing 40-foot preserved screen, would require a bermed buffer. The berm would be a minimum of eight feet in height, and would require a six-foot planting area atop of the berm. The berm should not exceed a slope of one foot of rise to two feet of run. Plantings would need to be atop of the berm or external to the berm, on the outside of it. The berm would be required, would need to be external of any fencing, and the berm would be installed coincident with each phase's construction and before pile driving within 1,000 feet of the berm. Structures which are within 300 feet but which have an existing screen that's at least 40 feet wide would be treated to an additional buffer. It wouldn't be a bermed buffer, but they would get an additional buffer. So would houses that are within 600 feet. That, I'm sorry, I got, I got ahead of the slides there, so let me back up really briefly and talk a little bit more about the berm buffer. I apologize. The, back to the berm buffer. Again, the berm buffers for houses that are within 300 feet and are not separated by an existing screen. So they require the berm, and they also require plantings to go, to accompany the berm on the top or on the outside. Those additional plantings would consist of a minimum of one evergreen tree with a minimum height of six feet every 10 feet, a large deciduous tree with a minimum trunk caliper of two inches, measured six inches from the ground every 15 feet, one understory deciduous tree with a minimum trunk caliper of two inches, measured six inches from the ground every 15 feet, and one evergreen shrub with a minimum height of four feet every 10 feet. These buffers would be required to be provided from a certified landscape designer or a landscape architect with the intent to minimize visibility, maximize survivability, and minimize any losses of vegetation from deer or wildlife consumption. Okay, so that's, that's the enhanced bermed buffer for the most impacted houses, the houses that have no landscaping between them, that are close. A smaller, non-bermed buffer is proposed for any residential structure that may be within 300 feet but is separated by an existing screen of at least 40 feet, or any house, excuse me, residential structure that's within 600 feet, and any VDOT-maintained right-of-way. Those would be screened with a supplemental buffer, which would consist of a minimum of one evergreen tree with a maximum height of six feet every 15 feet, and one large deciduous tree with a minimum trunk caliper of two inches, measured six inches from the ground every 10 feet. Like the previous buffer, this buffer would also need to be submitted to us by a certified landscape architect, or, excuse me, landscape designer or landscape architect with the intent to minimize visibility, maximize survivability, and minimize losses from deer or other wildlife consumption. In this instance, the existing landscaping should provide a contribution to this screening Onto noise. The construction of a proposed facility will generate construction noise. It will happen from onsite vehicles and activities. It will happen from traffic. Construction noise will, however, reach its highest point when the support pylons that we touched on earlier are being driven into the ground near residential homes. This activity should last for approximately four days at its loudest point, and then lessen substantially as the pile driving is completed in the proximity of the homes and those, that equipment moves further away. The applicant submitted a noise heat map, which staff believes will be substantially improved by the new conditions related to setback and buffering. Staff has also provided a number of conditions that we believe will further mitigate noise impacts. Construction noise is exempt from the county's noise ordinance. We do believe that these conditions, however, will assist in mitigating any noise. Those additional conditions include that all clearing grading and construction of property shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 to 7:00 Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 8:00. eight to six Saturday and Sunday. Pile driving within 500 feet of any residence shall cease at 5:00 P. M. daily and shall be prohibited all day on the first and third Sunday of the month. Advanced notice should be provided by first-class mail to properties within 1,000 feet of pile driving, no less than seven days prior to the start of such activity, and should include the estimated start date, end date, and the liaison's contact information. There's, we are also recommending condition that trucks and engine-powered equipment shall include mufflers and engine shrouds, no less than those effective, no less effective than those originally installed. Trucks and engine-powered equipment shall be maintained and properly tuned. Exhaust braking shall be limited to emergencies, and the use of noise-producing signals such as horns, whistles, alarms, and bells should only be used for safety purposes, safety and warning purposes. The applicants, along with county planning and, more importantly, fire rescue and emergency management staff, worked together to respond to the applicant's submitted emergency operations plans for construction, operation, and site safety. The solar energy fields are known to be relatively safe land uses with respect to electric shock, fire, toxicity, and E M F fields. The proposed facility would be monitored via a SCADA system, which stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. The documentation that the applicant provided in those emergency response plans is proposed to be conditioned and bound to this application. The documents were created, again with collaboration of county staff, and provide information on a variety of topics, including not limit to, limited to employee roles, unique concerns from P V systems, fire prevention and response, storms, natural disasters, spills, hazmat. Staff has not presently recommended a condition to completely prohibit burning of timber waste on site, but has proposed limitations on burning. Those limitations would include that it shall not occur within 3,000 feet of a residence, that a permit would be required, that all combustible material would be removed within 35 feet of any burning, that a water truck would be on standby, that a trench, these trench burners would be equipped with fire extinguishers, that sustained winds higher than 25 miles per hour could cause a cancellation or revocation of any permit, that the burning would take into consideration sensitive receptors and prevailing wind directions, that burning should cease two hours prior to the end of the workday, that a fire watch person be designed to monitor burning activities, and that a fire watch person shall remain in the immediate area of the burning at all times and shall not be designed any duties. And if the burn area is still producing smoke, it is technically still burning and must be attended by that fire watch person. Onto the topic of cadmium telluride panels. The county requested input from Dewberry Consulting regarding the safety of P V panels containing cadmium telluride. They responded that cadmium telluride is a compound that contains cadmium and tellurium. It is a black crystalline powder, it is odorless, not water soluble, non-flammable. It has a melting point of above 1,000 degrees Celsius, and the boiling point is above 110, excuse me, 1,100 degrees Celsius. Cadmium by itself is a highly toxic material, however, based on research, cadmium telluride is much less toxic than pure cadmium. Cadmium telluride can be toxic if ingested, inhaled, or comes into direct contact with skin. Further, that if they are handled properly during all phases of construction disposal, they will not emit any toxicity in the environment. Staff has nonetheless requested further information from the applicant regarding their plans to test and remediate any affected soil, as modified their recommended, recommending conditions accordingly. We did ask that Dewberry join us tonight, should you have questions following the presentation that might be related to that topic. That'd probably be a good time. I'd appreciate if you, just have a few more slides to go. The county also requested that Dewberry examine documentation from heat power and other sources regarding a heat island effect. The, that review was conducted. Dewberry recommended enhanced setbacks of 300 feet from residents, buffers and berms that should include shade trees and shrubs to create dense screens to absorb radiative heat, and they should be maintained, and vegetative coverage should be maximized with grasses to assist in evapotranspira, excuse me, evapotranspiration and soil heat absorption. And staff has modified their recommended conditions according to those recommendations. The third topic that staff asked Dewberry to provide some input on was decommissioning. They provided a number of suggestions. Among those suggestions was that plan did not address restoration of compacted soils and showed that additional information and details should be provided to, regarding the restoration of the ground, that clarification should be provided regarding the restoration of gravel access roads and stormwater management facilities, and notably that the county should require bonding of the actual cost of decommissioning before the recycling amounts are figured in. Staff has accordingly requested further information regarding the S Power decommissioning plan consistent with those recommendations. A subconsultant of Dewberry was Goldor Associates, a hydrology, a group that had an excellent hydrology specialist. We asked them to provide review of the hydrological information that was provided to us from S Power. They responded that we estimate that a minimum of 4,700 gallons a day, or 10% of the total estimated recharge amount could sustainably be withdrawn from the property without impact to the, regional impact to the aquifer system. That's more than the 100,000 G P D to 400,000 G P D that was originally estimated by S Power that it would need during construction. After construction is complete and normal operational water use decreases substantially, aquifer water levels and water quality should fully recover to pre-construction conditions. Goldor Associates provided additional information on studies and evaluations that the county should request, should the applicant propose any substantial withdrawals. County staff then inquired whether the applicant's requested 50,000 gallons per day could be withdrawn safely without further evaluation due to the small amount requested, and was informed that said withdrawal amount could safely be extracted for an extended period of time without posing any risks to neighboring wells, water quality, or underground aquifer systems. I'm going to pause briefly and turn this presentation over to Mr. Love Day.
Good evening. My name is Ben Love Day. I'm the Director of Utilities and Public Works for Spotsylvania County. The applicant has come to the department to look at the options of potentially connecting into the public water distribution system that feeds the Fawn Lake Zone, which includes multiple subdivisions out toward the Fawn Lake area. Anytime we look at a connection into a public drinking water system, we take into, into factor a lot of considerations, because we want to make sure that our existing customers are not impacted negatively. One of the first questions we ask is whether or not the connection is mandated, and that means is public water available on the site, or is it within the primary settlement area or a part of a subdivisioned ordinance that would require public utilities? At this point, use of public water on the S Power property is not mandated by ordinance or by utility code. Then we look at the size of the connection and the amount of water to be consumed, and obviously, the larger that connection, the larger that consumption value is, the more investigation, the more modeling, the more evaluation we do to determine whether or not there's going to be any adverse impacts. Once again, the goal of the department is to have no adverse impacts to existing customers. We also look at the overall pressure zone health or the area in which that connection's going to be made. We look at redundancy issues, whether or not there's a secondary feed into the, the location. We look at fire flow impacts, that's how much water you can gain out of a hydrant during max day demand conditions. We look at static and residual pressures, what you can say is static pressure is, is basically the pressure you get out of your sink tap or your shower. A residual is the pressure you would get if there was a major demand on the system, including a fire event. We look at available tank stores to make sure those are meeting the recommended fire codes and providing enough, a quantity of water in the area so that no folks were impacted. We looked at the overall finished water availability, that's capacity of our plants and distribution systems to deliver the water, and we also look at the impacts to water quality. And then finally, we look at system, system improvement opportunities. And those opportunities are typically improvements that have been made to the system that are above what the applicant, or above what the proposed development requires. And those values above what is required are eligible under code for potential cost shares. So let's say if you had a subdivision that needed to only have a eight-inch feed line going into it, and the county wanted to ultimately have a 12-inch feed line going into it, the county could actually cost share with that subdivision to increase that from an eight to a 12. It's a very simplistic example. Give you some rough ideas of where, of some of the statistics on the Fawn, Fawn Lake Zone itself. 80% of the homes have below 100,000 gallon per minute fire flow. The Fawn Lake Zone is basically from the 80s approximately. It was done as a long system extension outside the primary settlement area on a single feed. The area does have marginal pressures, and by marginal, I mean about 30 P S I. That basically means that you have only about 10 P S I to play with in the system before you start seeing impacts on whether or not a toilet functions, or whether or not a shower head functions the way it's supposed to. It also has issues with limited flushing capacity. What that means is the utilities department flushes regularly its distribution system in order to maintain a chlorine residual at the hydrant or at the customer's source, and that's to meet B D H regulations and requirements. We are constantly in a flushing capacity in Fawn Lake, just because of the length of time it takes water to get out there and get used by the consumers, especially during this time of the year when you don't have irrigation demands and things like that. To give you a rough idea of what the system area health is like, during non-peak, and I would consider non-peak basically your winter time months or when non, high demand periods, we have about five calls per month from customers in the zone complaining about pressures or water quality concerns, or, you know, why are we flushing in the facility, in the area, and things like that. During peak periods, which is typically, you're going to see that during the summertime months, that's when we have a very, very, very high irrigation demand in the Fawn Lake area. We get calls from 10 to 15 times per month, and typically those are associated with pressure complaints or changes in pressure that folks are noticing as the, the volume of water use increases. This is, it gives you a very basic idea of what the Fawn Lake Pressure Zone or where the connection would potentially be. Fawn Lake Zone incorporates Whitehall Subdivision, Spring Creek, the Brock Road Elementary School, Wine Wood, and then, of course, the Fawn Lake Subdivision. The, the entire zone is fed from the Lake Bottom Booster Station. Basically, that's a station that takes water from the distribution system and pumps it at a higher rate and higher pressure into that distribution area to maintain the pressures. Give you an idea of what the existing zone conditions are like, what you see here is actually a fire flow map of the Fawn Lake Zone. That's the area you just previously saw on the slide. And what we're looking at here, it shows you where the, any homes below, or basically, these are nodes in the system that if they're red, you have below 1,000 gallons a minute, which is typically what the fire department, typically what industry is looking for. We do have some areas on this map that show as low as 350 to 375, which is basically a little bit more than a single hose pole off of a fire truck. Give you an idea, also, we modeled the pressures in the system out there, and this is once again under a max day condition, but if you have a major fire event in some of the lower zone, portions of that zone, and that hydrant is left over for an extended duration, you are going to have what we call a lower residual pressure. Typically, you're looking for a residual pressure of 20 P S I as the lowest point you go, but obviously, here, based on this modeling and those fire flow issues, we would see up to, you know, basically, a zero pressure or even potentially a negative pressure, which is a backflow at a meter. So typically, the health of the system is not, not stellar. So once again, that kind of factors into what we do and how we evaluate potential connections to the distribution system. So the S Power connection, they approached us some time ago looking at the potentials for connecting to the public water. The desired volume has been estimated by the applicant about 100,000 gallons a day. That's during the construction period. 350 gallons a day during operation, this is based on assumed value, this is basically a single-family home, a, a single residential unit, just a base demand. Once again, that connection is not mandated by ordinance. The nearest connection point is through the Fawn Lake Subdivision, and the, the importance of this one is based on the health of that pressure zone. We would look for a county-controlled connection to ensure there's no adverse impacts on the existing customers, which includes making sure that during the maximum daily demand period, that we can control the volume and the pressure and the time of that withdrawal. And once again, this is regulated to ensure that there's no adverse impacts to the existing system, and so we would want to control that volume of withdrawal, the time of withdrawal, and protect existing customer pressures in the system itself. The existing system connection, this is basically if the applicant were to connect to the public water system today with absolutely no improvements to the system, this is just as-is capacity. We would want to recommend the limit of withdrawal to be from 10:00 P. M. to 4:00 A. M. That's because of the demand curves we see in the subdivision, basically when people are using the least amount of water that would be impacted. During the October to April timeframe, which is your non, is your non-peak periods, we would be looking for a limit of around 69,000 gallons a day. These numbers were modeled to ensure that there was no chance of adverse impacts to existing customers within the zone. In May to September, we would recommend a maximum withdrawal of 56,000 gallons per day. And if the additional, if water volume was acquired, required above that value, the county has an existing bulk water withdrawal program, where basically customers, large customers come to the department and get meters that attach to certain specified hydrants. We have about nine to 10 of them in the county, and then actually fill the, a tanker truck with that water. Typically, you see that for pool fills and things like that, construction, basically around a four to 5,000 gallon to tank a day, a four or 5,000 gallon tanker. If you were to do a semi, you could get, you know, 7,500 to 8,000 gallons out of that semi contain, out of that semi trailer. The connection would be something like this, based on the conversations with the applicant. A connection would be made, be made into the Fawn Lake main feed line, which is a 12-inch line going throughout Fawn Lake. The extension cost of this is 100% of the applicant. The county and the department is not allowed to cost share. Basically, if the applicant requires a 12-inch feed, and it's an extension of the system that brings no other value to the department or the county, that's on the applicant to do. So that's 100% on their cost for that extension. In this case, we'd be looking for a proposed flow control and pressure sustaining valve, once again, to ensure no adverse impacts into existing customer base. And then obviously, onsite, wherever that would be, the applicant would most likely be installing a temporary or permanent ground storage tank, just to meet the requirements of the, their own needs and of the fire requirements set forth by F R I M. So under the existing system, existing connection or connecting to the existing system, based on the recommended controls, we would see no observable pressure change, we would see no change to fire flow conditions out there, and no change to water quality conditions. So it'd basically be a harmless, a kind of a whole harmless connection, it would be no adverse impacts into the existing customer base. The applicant then expressed interest in withdrawing the full 100,000 gallons a day from the distribution system, so this is where the department went back and looked to see what would take to make that happen. Based on some improvements to the distribution system, we will once again recommend the limit of withdrawal to be between 10:00 P. M. and 4:00 A. M., but the withdrawal values increase. October to April, they would increase to 166,000 gallons a day. May to September, 153,000 gallons a day. And additional water can once again be obtained through the bulk water program, should there be a failure in the system, or should additional water be required above those amount, amounts. Now, these zone feed improvements actually were already part of the utility capital plan in various projects. It was not its own specific project, but was planned as part of several other projects to be done over multiple, multi-year, multi-phase, just because of the cost. It's been known and planned for since the 2000s, probably 2005 to 2008, I think, is when that first really kind of come up in conversation. And that zone feed improvement is not only to address the capacity of the, of the zone, but also the age. The existing pipe that feeds most of the Fawn Lake Zone is, and is what they call is asbestos cement pipe. It's a rarely, relatively fragile pipe, they don't use them anymore, and it's at the end of its life, so the county eventually will have to replace that feed line regardless of what happens, any type of S U P determination. We would look to replace that with a 16-inch ductal iron pipeline, once again, increasing capacity and dealing with the age and resiliency of the system out there. The county's project timeline for doing these improvements would probably be in the next five to seven years, just based on how we do our C I P management and how we five to seven years, just based on how we do our CIP management and how we procure projects and the length of time it takes to get those things acquired and pulled together. S-Power has discussed potentially completing those improvements, we're working to complete said improvements in twelve to eighteen months at max, I think that, you know, that's some of the conversations that we have had, that would be critically important to them to get any type of improvement like that done, so that they could maximize that withdrawal value. So the proposed improvements, this is, it kind of gives you an overall view, once again, this is the entire Fawn Lake Pressure Zone. The red line that feeds from what we call the lake bottom pump station out to Fawn Lake is the sixteen-inch line replacement and upgrade, there's already a twelve-inch feed line that goes out there, so this is not extending the service area, this is already there, it's just basically would be installed directly adjacent to that pipe. And then, if you look in the bottom left-hand corner of the site, of this exhibit, you'll see the approximate location of where a ground storage tank might be located, should that be the interest of the applicant. Gives you a little bit closer view of the proposed sixteen-inch distribution main, once again, from where we had the lake bottom pump station out to roughly where the mouse pointer is right now, that's the twelve-inch feed line that would be replaced, and then there's actually a new section that the county had planned on doing or looking at doing to basically increase the amount of water that can get into this main kind of spine line that runs throughout the neighborhood. In addition to that, we'd actually look at doing two, or having two PRVs installed at Spring Creek, just to ensure that future pressures didn't get out of whack with the Spring Creek customers. Once again, this goes back to the existing fire flow condition that tells you what's going on today, as-is. If the improvements, and this is just the sixteen-inch line improvement was completed, you get a much better picture. What we see here is, once again, the red nodes aren't so great, blue nodes are better, and of course, no color is the best. It does make a substantial change to the fire flows available to a lot of the, a lot of the zone, but obviously, there's still issues out there that can be addressed with future CIP planning or future work from the county. So the system impacts of potential for these improvements and/or connection, we're looking at potential accelerated project timelines, improved system pressures, improved fire flows, improved flushing ability in the zone, which would in turn mean improved water quality, and it also allows us to do future system improvements, and this is, we wanted to make sure we included this to let folks know that, you know, the department does care about the zone and its customers out there, so, you know, we do have plans to address the red areas, the bad zones you see on the, on some of these exhibits. Future public water county system improvements that we would look at doing is actually improving the lake bottom booster station, potentially having an additional permanent public drinking water tank somewhere in the vicinity of Fawn Lake, and actually include a booster station there at that tank location. And ultimately, at the end of the day, these improvements, once completed, you know, by the county, would increase your static pressures out there by as much as fifteen percent, your residual pressures as much as twenty-five percent, you have greatly improved fire flows with less than one percent of the folks in the zone having below a thousand gallons a minute, and, once again, improved flushing ability, improved water quality, and also less water loss, because right now, I mean, we've had a hydrant in Fawn Lake which has been running for, I mean, weeks on end, just to maintain the chlorine residuals that's required, and it really, especially when you have situations where the temperatures don't work with you, the colder it gets, the longer that chlorine stays in the water, so if it stays warm, but you don't have a lot of demand, that chlorine value goes down, so that's one of the reasons we've had to flush considerably this fall. Ultimately, at the end of the day, once again, we're wanting to make sure we're communicating that we are aware of the issues and working with customers, you know, this is what we would want to see out there, is the improved zone condition plus the tank plus the second booster plus booster improvements, that shows you the less than one percent of individuals out there with a substandard fire flow condition. And this is the, gives you an idea of what the actual pressures would be under a fire flow event with the entirely improved system, once again, nobody's under the twenty PSI category, so, we just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we, you know, we do have plans to work with folks and address some of those issues. So the physical impact of the public drinking order, the public utility, once again, there are potential cost share opportunities, if it's above and beyond what the applicant requires for their development or for their, any type of connection, that could potentially be tank construction, that could potentially be transmission main upgrades and replacements, that could be, but those items really would not be addressed by the utility until after any SUP determination. We would treat that separately, almost at the site plan stage, when folks come in to talk about connecting in, and that's kind of where we identify those improvements can be made. Availability fees, we were about seventy-five thousand dollars approximately for availability fees for this connection, and the consumption revenue, for a hundred thousand gallons a day, if you do that every day for three hundred and sixty-five days, it's about four hundred thousand dollars a year, and then after that, if it's, you know, basically a three fifty gallon a day connection, it's about sixteen hundred dollars a year cost.
The next topic that we're going to cover is the project's fiscal impact. The project will result in a rollback tax of approximately four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, this is a one-time payment because the, much of the land is currently under land use. The Code of Virginia does provide tax exemptions from local property taxes for solar energy facilities. For this specific project, at the full five hundred megawatts, including sites B and C, the exemption is eighty percent exemption, so the county would collect taxes at the real estate tax rate on twenty percent of the assessed value of the facility. The project would be assessed by the State Corporation Commission and not the local assessor's office because of the size. The fiscal and economic impact analysis prepared by S-Power was based on a value of about five hundred and fifty-two million dollars. At build-out and at the current tax rate in year one, the full project, including sites B and C, would, is, be expected to bring in about seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That declines because of depreciation over time, in year twenty-four, we're at seventy-nine thousand dollars. The analysis also included a evaluation of the project utilizing the composite index. Essentially, as the community becomes more wealthy, it collects larger amounts of tax, the county is responsible for a greater portion of the school funding, the state pays less, so that does have an impact, anytime we have a project come in that results in greater tax benefit to the county, the county also does assume a greater portion of its school share. So that's what's shown in the right-hand column. And again, this fiscal and economic analysis that was prepared by S-Power covers all three sites, A, B, and C. So if you look at the A, just looking at it as four hundred out of the five hundred megawatts, looking at four fifths of the amount, we're expecting about five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars related to this SUP that's before you this evening. If these figures all come to fruition, this would be expected to be one of the top ten property taxpayers in the county.
Thank you, Director Parrish, just a few more slides to go. Staff did conduct a comprehensive plan analysis and a two-two-three-two or consistency review, those are within the republic hearing packet, they're summarized below. The comprehensive plan consistent review, consistency review, also known as a two-two-three-two review, examines whether or not the location, character, and extent of a facility is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. Staff presently cannot find that the project is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan at this time, due to the lack of certain finalized plans that should be conditioned to address health, safety, and welfare. Specifically, those plans included the previously mentioned traffic mitigation plan, landscape cover and buffer maintenance plan, soil testing and remediation plan, and an amended decommissioning plan. There's further details in your staff report, basically a general comprehensive plan review, it looks at the various elements of the comp plan, including the introduction and vision, land use, transportation, historic and cultural resources, and natural resources. The details are in there, they are subject to change as the, when these new documents arrive, but generally, the proposed solar energy facility is complementary to agricultural and rural resources and compatible from a land use perspective. Staff does note that the conditions proposed substantially assist in reaching compatibility with comprehensive plan goals and policies, and as noted on the prior slide, staff cannot recommend that the application is in full conformance with the comprehensive plan at this time. Similarly, staff's analysis of the subject case with respect to the eight standards of special use permit approval is also contained in your report and subject to change, but at this time, the staff cannot find the project consistent with all of those eight standards. So staff has some recommendations. Staff is recommending postponement of the planning commission's recommendation, so that staff may obtain these four additional plans from the applicant, which shall be integrated into our recommended conditions. Those plans include the landscape and buffer maintenance plan as recommended by the county's consultant, to mitigate any negative impact on heat island effect from the facility, and to establish procedures for planting and maintenance of vegetation. This plan should include the recommendations from Dewberry in Appendix D, and further shall include a plan for the management of the property's internal access roads, fire breaks, panel rows, required buffers, preserve vegetated buffers, and the growth underneath of solar panels. B, it shall describe the seed mix proposed for use on the property, the mix shall be selected based on their abilities to quickly germinate and stabilize soils and attract pollinators. C, include a pollinator support strategy, which shall provide details on the pollinator attractive seeds proposed for use during construction or operation, and best management practices proposed to increase pollinator activity during the operation of the facility. D, include an invasive species management strategy to prevent noxious and invasive growth of weeds and species on the property, and lastly, E, identify herbicides and pesticides proposed for use. The second requirement is for a soil testing and remediation plan is recommended by the county's consultant to monitor for any soil contamination from potential use of cadmium tellarite panels or other heavy materials. Three, the decommissioning plan revisions is recommended by the county's consultant to address the full breadth of decommissioning. And lastly, a final traffic mitigation plan that shall include at minimum a school bus avoidance plan to limit construction and employee traffic accessing the property during the hours of six-ten to eight-forty, and two-forty-five to four-thirty during the Spotsylvania County Public Schools instructional year. B, the plan for onsite parking areas, offsite shuttle parking areas, and shuttling at least seventy percent of the workforce to and from the site during construction. C, a plan which coordinated with VDOT for video documentation of construction hall routes, including pavement conditions along said routes, driveway corners, and aprons of roads for any use and access to the site, and D, details of any temporary traffic control measures. Staff's further recommending conditions are contained in your staff report, they're about ten pages long, I will read those into the record if you desire, I will display those into the record if you desire, otherwise, I'll stand by for your questions.
Thank you, Patrick. At this point, we're going to move right into public comment, I'm sure we're going to call you back for any, pardon me, oh, excuse me, you are correct, I'll give the applicant a chance to present, but, we'll call you back in a later time.
We'll be right here.
Thank you. Charlie, you have ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, other members of the planning commission. My name is Charlie Payne, and I represent the applicant. We also have here the applicant's representatives, our civil engineer, and our contractor, in case you have any questions that I can't answer. It's always a pleasure to be in Spotsylvania County, appreciate your time this evening. It may look as if I brought my office with me this evening, there's a lot of information, obviously, that's been inputted and engaged in this project, there's obviously a lot of citizens here with concerns and questions. When I first showed up, I was thinking that maybe all these folks were here for item one on your agenda, but I was wrong, it looks like. But again, the fact that we have participation from the community about this project is exciting, we think the interest is exciting. This project, in my opinion, is a unique opportunity for Spotsylvania County, this is a twenty-first century energy generating facility, this is the future, this is how energy sources are going to be generated well into the future, and we're ahead of the curve by having them here, and it's wonderful to have them here. I also have with me binders for each of you, that will include our responses to staff comments and recommendations, it also includes two scientific reports regarding the panels, regarding the alleged heat island effects that have been discussed, and also regarding decommissioning. I also have a commitment letter here from the CEO in regards to community investments, have you heard a lot of discussion about that, that is also in this packet for your review. With that, I'm going to, I have a brief PowerPoint, at least to the extent that it is brief, to go through this project and talk about the issues. Next slide, please. This is the overview of what I'm going to go through, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, given the limited amount of time, and the fact that staff has gone through many of the details. Next slide. The applicant, a little bit about the applicant, it's important to know who's here, Sustainable Power Group, S-Power headquartered in Salt Lake City with offices in San Francisco, Long Beach, and just recently in Spotsylvania County. S-Power is a leading independent power producer, it owns and operates more than a hundred and fifty utility and commercial distributed electric generation systems in twelve different states. Who owns S-Power, who backs S-Power is two of the most valuable corporations in the country, AES, which is headquartered in Virginia, which is a large energy company, Fortune 500 company, and Alberta Investment Management, Aimco, which is one of the world's largest institutional investor companies, so, this is the company, very stable. State Corporation Commission, our first step in this process was to obtain their approval, they regulate utilities in Virginia, we received a certificate of public convenience and necessity on August eighth, that report found construction in the project will have no adverse effect in reliability electric services in Virginia, the proposed project will generate direct and indirect economic benefits to Spotsylvania County and the Commonwealth. Based on the conditions imposed in the report, the project will comply with all necessary federal, state, and local agencies, we are regulated by about twenty-five different agencies, this is one of the most regulated industries in the country, federal, state, and of course, Spotsylvania County, and the project is not contrary to the public interest. Project overview, we have included-
Please, I'll have order, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have included all the sites, of course, this is three different applications, and only today, A is in front of you, but a lot of this obviously applies to all the sites, we've included that. Again, this is a twenty-first century innovative five hundred megawatt solar energy facility coming to Spotsylvania County, the total acreage is about sixty-three hundred acres, we're only utilizing about thirty-five hundred, the rest will be preserved. As staff has noted regarding the PV solar panels, it would be CAD, TEL, and silicon, we'll get a little more of that in just a little bit. Under A3 zoning, it's important to know, you could do two hundred and fifty buy right residential lots there. Currently, the property is being used for civil culture activities and timbering. The property was selected due to its location in a rural area, and having lots of acreage contiguous to it, and obviously, key being able to connect to the Dominion Substation, which has been there for several years. Overall project investment is about six hundred million dollars. As staff noted, we will be one of the top taxpayers in Spotsylvania County, we will generate about nine to ten million over the life of the project. Currently, that site's generating its inland use, and you heard staff note that we would have to pay rollback taxes immediately, it's generating about twenty thousand dollars a year, so if you project it out, and honestly, doesn't it have an included increase in CIP, but if you just use a flat number, about seven hundred thousand, you would generate in that same period from this site over thirty-five years. It's about a thirteen-hundred percent increase in tax revenue for this county. First year alone, you'll generate about one point three million. Next slide, please. Economic benefits for the county, about fifty-four million dollars in immediate employment benefits, dollars into the county, and that's direct, that doesn't count the food vendors and the mechanics, and the convenience stores, and the gasoline that's purchased, and the equipment companies and laborers, et cetera, that would benefit from this project, and immediate economic development impact. After construction, you have about twenty-five to thirty full-time positions, investment of approximately, as we heard earlier today, about three point five million dollars in public water line infrastructure, which will benefit the Fawn Lake community, especially with fire flow and pressure and capacity. The development and installation of the solar arrays, we're also, as part of our solar mission, be committing a million dollars or so in solar panels, which will generate about thirty million dollars in electricity savings for the city, I'm sorry, for the county, over the thirty-five-year period that we're here. As part of the project, the inclusion of two fifty thousand dollar water tanks, not only for our use, but also for FREM's uses down the road in that particular area, and also, we're working with Verizon Located Cell Tower. The applicant will continue to invest in our community, it'll be a good corporate neighbor, I encourage you to look at this, the support letter that we got from Lancaster, California, where currently S-Power has five hundred and fifty megawatts, it's from the city manager- It's from the city manager. It couldn't be a better compliment than his statement that this is a good corporate citizen that's committed to new jobs and economic development. Next slide. Environmental, there's been a lot of questions about environmental. This is a safe, reliable project. It will not have any environmental impact to, to our neighbors or the surrounding community or to the environment. We're preserving over twenty-five acres of open space. It will include, this project will include, you heard from Mr. Tigner, innovative stormwater management system that's both been reviewed by DEQ and the county. S-Power will also have native plants, as recommended by the county and DEQ, replanted. And again, this has been reviewed by several different agencies, and we've taken into account the recommendations. Again, this will be a very regulated process. Next, please. Continuing environmental, the project is being designed to avoid impacts to wetlands, as you heard from staff. Our goal on the, one of the big issues that came up in community meetings was impacting the aquifer. We're going to tap into the aquifer and impact wells of our surrounding property owners. That was the main reason for shifting to public water. So we've done that. We've listened to the community. We also have security fencing. We will provide some relief net security fencing for wildlife. Next slide, please. Cultural resources, the project will be designed to avoid impacts to any historical resources on the site. We did retain a consultant to assist us with that, and it was reviewed by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. Open space and buffering, again, we're preserving about twenty-eight-hundred acres. We will conserve, conserve existing trails through the site. We're working with the county in identifying those locations. Setbacks, all areas will include, around us will include at least a fifty-foot vegetation, whether it's natural vegetation preserved, berms and landscaping from our neighbors. That would be, that will be inclusive in addition to the setback to the panels at one-hundred to four-hundred feet, depending on the location. Again, given the, the different types of property, the different locations of these properties, the topography, et ceteras, are quite different from all different angles. And again, we'll have berming. Next, please. Construction, this is approved. The plan is to start in 2019, hopefully be completed in 2020. That's important. A lot of the impacts that you heard today from staff are during the construction stage. That's temporary. After it's all done and during operations, we'll have twenty-five to thirty people on site, full-time. It'll be very quiet. Won't be a lot of traffic, no impact on schools, no impact on roads, no impact on parks, no impact on county services, a net positive project. During construction, as we stated earlier, that fifty-four million dollars will be generated into the economy and will include seven-hundred to eight-hundred local jobs. That will be a big plus. You'll see from the city manager, those local jobs play a big role in his community. Construction traffic, excuse me, construction traffic will, as staff noted, be in accordance with our transportation planning. We're well aware of the sensitivities regarding AM and PM, peak hour traffic and school traffic. We're going to work very closely with the county to address those issues. Next, please. Fire rescue and emergency management, you heard from staff that we have an emergency response plan, both during construction and during operations, and that plan will be implemented during the entire process. We will be working with fire and rescue about access. Any burning will be done in accordance with county requirements. And remember, we can't burn May through September, so there's a limited burning process, and burning is only one of the options.
Charlie, your, your time is up. Thank you, sir. Yes, that'll be fine. All right, at this point in time, we will move into the public comment. Again, I remind you of how we do this protocols. Paul, that's going to call you up in groups of three. As you signed up, I would ask that you come right up to the podium so that we can get everybody on tonight. I would ask and expect civility and decorum this evening. Your comments are addressed to the planning commission members and not any particular individual. And this is your chance to speak to the commission. It is a one-way conversation from you to the members of the planning commission. So with that, I remind you of the time in the box on the front to help you out, and I will certainly help you once your time is done. So Paul, I'll turn it over to you.
Russ Mueller will be representing a group, followed by Kevin McCarthy and Dave Hammond.
Good evening. I'm Russ Mueller from Livingston District, and I'm going to summarize a letter that I have before you from a noted land use attorney, Clark Lemming, who urges you to consider the provisions we've requested, that is, the concerned citizens of Fawn Lake and Spotsy County. Mr. Lemming says the impact of the project constructed will shake the development substantial portion of the county indefinitely. Further, the long-term effects of the solar plant are largely unknown, particularly given the indefiniteness of the decommissioning phase, which has not been adequately addressed to date. He says the commission is well advised to accept the staff's recommendation that the S-Power application is deficient in a number of respects, requiring the submission of additional plans by the applicant and review by the staff. And the staff notes the need for additional conditioning. While it's not altogether clear why S-Power's plans are not more definitive by this time in the process, the commission is under no obligation to finalize its recommendation till the staff says it's completed its analysis or the applicant has declined to submit further plans. He says in the event the commission accepts the staff recommendation to postpone its decision, that the commission hold the public hearing open to receive additional comments when revisions are made to the application. As to Virginia Code Section sixty-seven dash one oh three, Mr. Lemming says, in his view, the county has not adopted any provision in its zoning ordinance or comp plan, contrary to the requirement of the Virginia law, and that once adopted, the reasonable application of such criteria by the commission or the board is protected by the doctrine of legislative discretion. He also says unlike a rezoning, where applicants can propose proffers, including cash, to offset the impact of rezoning, in the case of SUPs, conditions are imposed by the locality and run with a use permit. Whilst doubtful such conditions can include cash payments, conditions can be imposed that will cause the applicant to make expenditures to accomplish their requirements. In this case, staff has proposed ten pages of extensive conditions, but notwithstanding the diligent work of staff, the concerned citizen group has requested in some cases more comprehensive conditions as included in the September twenty-fifth documents you have, such as additional limitations on water use and resources, prohibition of phosphorus chemicals or fertilizers, and cadmium tellurium panels, provision of setbacks of three-hundred-and-fifty feet or more, and sufficient bonding to permit complete decommissioning and making S-Power liable for this. As to the staff report, he says the conditions at this point are not sufficient, that they're insufficient, to offset the impacts of the development, and the staff has acknowledged that. As to comprehensive plan compliance review, on page thirteen of the staff report, it says that, quote, "A final finding," unquote, is pending. He says the findings should be undertaken by the commission, assisted by the staff, and not the staff alone. He says in this context, determination as to whether proposed solar plants in accord with the comp plan is more within the province of the commission than the staff, which has no statutory authority to make such determinations. As to economic impact, he says that, based on his review, it is not clear what the benefits are to the county. The tax benefits seem negligible. He says from the locality standpoint, there should be some significant positive fiscal benefit to offset the considerable impact on the locality, not to mention the limitations of future land uses. So on behalf of the concerned citizens group, we urge the commission to proceed to your own section by section by section, Section twenty-two thirty-two review, and to direct staff to include the mitigation conditions we've asked for now for Almo...
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Thank you. Who's next?
Kevin McCarthy, Dave Hammond, and Trey Taylor.
Kevin McCarthy, Livingston, on my own behalf. I'm told the commission won't care what's going on anywhere else in the world, only what's right, you only care about what's right here in front of you. I hope that's not true. A planning commission needs to see the big picture, especially when asked to permit ten square miles of designated forest to be turned into number five of the ten largest solar power plants in the country. We should ask, okay, so where are the other nine? What's going on there? We just heard that solar is the future. Maybe not. Here's the five things I've learned about, I think I've learned about the renewables industry. Number one, everywhere solar goes, trouble follows. Higher consumer electric bills, increased taxes, grid instability, blackouts, brownouts, more gas or coal plants to back up solar. Number two, entire countries are backpedaling. Canada, Germany, Japan, Spain, China, this week Nigeria, an ongoing "the blunder down under." From the newspaper, The Australian, quote, "Political leaders have for years been telling voters we can switch to solar and wind without our standard of living or economy suffering, while maintaining our industry and technology and without increasingly prohibitive power prices." That's a lie, and you can only lie for so long before the truth catches up with you. Regular people have figured it out." Number three, voters are awakened. Last election day, initiatives in support of climate mandates in some very green energy states all failed. This week, riots in Paris, not just because of the gas tax, it's actually bigger than that. It's a rejection of the climate change agenda. The president of France instituted that tax with the express purpose of fighting climate change. Now, his riot police are fighting his own citizens instead. Number four, the Trump administration is apparently going in a different direction. The president just signed the Nuclear Energy Innovation Capabilities Act. Its purpose, to enable civilian research and development of advanced nuclear energy. Number five, the solar industry's primary business appears to me to be getting subsidies. So when the subsidies are gone, the gold rush is over. Can any of these renewable LLCs point to a single project that is not on life support with an IV line all the way to Washington? This most telling indictment comes from Harvard University Environmental Center Professor Joseph Aldi, quote, "We put up solar panels where the subsidies are, not where the sun is," unquote. The planning commission needs to see the forest for the trees, or in our case, what used to be the forest for what used to be the trees. One million, maybe two million trees leveled in favor of two million solar panels? All for the benefit of Microsoft and Apple's tax credits and to line the pockets of a caravan of out-of-state investors? No thanks. Let's learn from other people's mistakes. I've included in the package, I gave you two succinct articles that, in my view, really summarize this. One, green energy is...
Thank you very much. Who's next?
Dave Hammond, followed by Trey Taylor and Irv Boils.
Good evening. My name is Dave Hammond, Livingston District, speaking for myself. I've given you a copy of my comments. I've been presenting information to you since February. That was ten months ago. S-Power's application was deemed complete at the end of March. That was eight months ago. So my question is, how is it possible that we are here tonight, holding a formal public hearing with an incomplete and inconclusive staff report and several incomplete required documents from the applicant? There remain several unanswered questions and requests for robust scientific studies that S-Power is either unable or unwilling to provide. One key issue is the safety of the proposed cadmium telluride panels. At your last meeting, I questioned the robustness of the claimed encapsulation of cadmium by a single layer of plastic. The county's independent engineering consultant, Dewberry, failed to address encapsulation in their report issued last Tuesday. I'll point out that there are several deficiencies in Dewberry's report that should be addressed, and I've given my comments to staff. Encapsulation, my demand for encapsulation is prove it. Show me a scientific report that has collected several destroyed solar panels after a hurricane or tornado and measure whether all of the cadmium is still inside each one. It is a straightforward analytical exercise. However, S-Power has not responded at all. Where is the proof of their claim? Remember, the burden of proof is on S-Power and the solar industry to demonstrate clearly that they will not cause harm. If there is any doubt, you must err on the side of caution to protect Spotsylvania and its citizens. All of the people here tonight want to know that you are addressing their concerns. Therefore, I recommend you take the following five actions. One, postpone all further deliberations of all three S-Power applications until they've completed all of the documentation to the satisfaction of the planning commission. Two, make as many decisions as you can tonight, based on the testimony you are hearing here tonight, and provide your input to the planning staff. Three, direct the planning staff to update the report within two weeks, based on the decisions you make tonight and updated studies from Dewberry. Four, direct the staff to update their report again when S-Power's documentation is complete. And finally, five, hold another public hearing after all of this is done and allow us to comment on a complete set of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Who's next?
Trey Taylor, followed by Irv Boils and Bud Hall.
Good evening. Trey Taylor, Livingston District. I'm here speaking on behalf of four voting Taylors in our district. Thank you, first off, for your time, for hearing our concerns and listening to us tonight. I'm here to voice my opposition to this proposed power plant that they want to build in our backyard. My opinion's been formed on a lot of the things you're going to hear echoed tonight. The decreased property value concerns, the numbers that seem to change in every conversation, the safety concerns, the environmental hazards, the construction risk, the decommissioning cost that is, seems woefully insufficient on the back end of this project. The fraud cases in the state courts that seem to be piling up. New Jersey, Utah, North Carolina, Washington, Oregon, the list goes on. I don't want to be part of that list, and I don't want our state to be part of that list. But what I'm here to talk about tonight is proximity. If you look at what's up on the slide right now here, what we did is we looked at the ten largest solar plants currently built in the U.S. This one is supposed to be number five on the list, and it's marked in the red box right there. And we looked at how close are these to residential neighborhoods, our homes. The closest one to a residence, state line out in California, is twelve thousand feet from the closest residence. Twelve thousand. Twelve thousand. The proposition on the table, three-hundred-and-fifty. It just doesn't seem to be comparable to what is currently being built in the scale in this country. So the solution out here that I am seeing is that three-hundred-and-fifty, S-Power's throwing in a bunch of different numbers. Now we're talking about the proposal of a burn in some trees, six-foot burn, eight-foot burn. My concern with this problem is that most of our houses have two floors. I can see right over top of that burn. And I don't know about you, but I don't want to be, whether it's my first floor or my second floor window, looking out the window, seeing solar panels scarring our beautiful habitat from here to the horizon. So, in fact, in two of these, if you look at them, and they're marked in stars there, there's actually a prison closer to these residences than a power plant. I don't want a convict or a solar power plant to be my next-door neighbor, and that's my stance on this. This project just seems too big and too close to our homes, and I think that makes it a little bit risky. If we want to be in solar, let's tiptoe into solar. All right? Let's be responsible. Let's protect ourselves. This is not tiptoeing. This is both feet in with all disregard for respect for what's going to happen in the long run. Charlie Payne said on the news last night, this is going to put us on the map. He's right. The problem is, it's going to put us on the map for all the wrong reasons. All right? Let's look at this, and let's say no to this project until it has been reviewed much further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Irv Boils, Bud Hall, Sean Fogarty.
I'll get the other speakers right up behind, please, too, as well.
My name's Irv Boils, Livingston District. I've spoken before, and my concern now is I do not feel the commission or the board is taking seriously the whole picture of this installation relative to its interface with the Dominion power and what happens when the electric grid goes out? And how is that power that's being five-hundred megawatts, how is it going to be dispersed? How is it going to be controlled so that it does not cause every transformer... How is it going to be controlled so that it does not cause every transformer, every inverter, every piece of equipment in the whole system catching fire and bringing harm and damage to the whole community? It is well-known that the electric grid is vulnerable to not only natural causes, we saw that with the recent hurricane Florence, but we also know that through the Department of Defense, through the Department of Homeland Security, that the grid is vulnerable to terrorist attacks, cyber attacks. There are very, and if this power goes out, what happens? Who's liable? Who's responsible for where the power goes? You're accumulating 500 megawatts of energy? You got overload to every piece of equipment in the, in the system if it can't be dispersed. And so I challenge this commission to take this into account in the big picture and get an accountability for what, who's responsible and what, what has to be done to protect us from the damages that can occur. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
Bud Hall, Sean Fogarty, and Mike Michelosco. And you can, you can stack in the aisle.
Come on up to the podium, please. Cue right up there.
Bud Hall.
Let's move on to the next speaker.
Sean Fogarty, Mike Michelosco, and Mike Anastasio.
Sean Fogarty, Livingston District, speaking for myself. Before you is an unprecedented application for the county to consider. I appreciate the hard work that went into the staff report. However, at least partly because of S-Power's failure to adequately respond and in a timely manner, we are left with an incomplete and incorrect staff report. I'm going to address Appendix A, the comprehensive plan analysis. Based on Attorney Lemming's letter, which was read earlier, the planning commission is statutorily required to conduct a 2232 review of this project, which should be completed independently of the SUP consideration. The staff report inappropriately blends these two processes together. In fact, this hearing was not advertised as a 2232 review, only as a special use permit review. These are separate processes that need to be treated accordingly. Additionally, SUP consideration should cease if the planning commission and board of supervisors find that the project is not in accord with the comprehensive plan. Number one of the eight special use standards of review is, the proposed use is in accord with the comp plan and other official plans adopted by the county. State law 2232 requires that the commission ensure the application is in accord with the comp plan. This proposal violates both number one of the special use standards and Virginia Code 2232 as it relates to the comp plan. Just as a reminder, twice in the last several months, the Culpeper Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of two permit requests, the only two that they have considered in Culpeper County, for solar facilities, based primarily on them not being in accord with the comp plan. The staff's analysis on the comp plan that was provided as Appendix A to your package relies almost entirely on paragraph 1D7, which allows for this use in agglans on a complimentary basis. The staff report then uses that one word, complimentary, to drive a bulldozer through numerous other land provisions and other key provisions of the comp plan. The point is that I'm making that the massive scale is overwhelming the other factors. So it is not complimentary, it is dominating. There are, they are not coexisting or co-supporting. There are several reasons why you can vote no on this plan, the comp plan being one of them. And I understand that you will not be, you will continue the hearing and postponing your vote tonight, but my opinion is that you already have enough information and legal justification based on the comprehensive plan to vote no. So I strongly encourage you to do so when that time comes. Thank you.
Mike Michelosco, followed by Mike Anastasio and Charmaine Mueller.
Thank you. Thank you. My name's Mike Michelosco, Livingston District, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. S-Power originally called this project a solar farm. Then they called it a solar energy center. Now you can call it a solar farm, you can call it a solar energy center, you can call it a solar peanut butter sandwich. But what it truly is, is a massive utility improperly placed in the residential, agricultural, and forestal part of the county. It is a, it is a wolf utility clothed in cheap clothing under the guise of complimentary use. It is not consistent with the project's location, character, and extent as laid out in the comprehensive plan. The staff report states that the location for the proposed utility will inevitably result in the loss of significant silvicultural acreage. This flies in the face of the comp plan that says they want to foster the preservation of agricultural and forestal land and discourage rezoning and special use permits. The report suggests that there's a trade-off that you have to take between maintaining agricultural and forestry versus renewable energy generation. But no such trade-off exists if renewable energy generation is done within the primary development boundaries of the county rather than the rural areas. The comprehensive plan repeatedly emphasizes preserving the rural character and agricultural viability of those portions of the county outside the primary development boundary. Finally, with regard to extent, the report states that the magnitude of the proposal tests the limits of whether the project may be found harmonious in scale. Now, if a 400-megawatt project doesn't test the limit, then what scale project would ever exceed the limit? Since this is the first solar energy facility proposed, perhaps the county should consider limits on such projects before proceeding. The applicant's proposal fails the location, character, and extent of the land use designation in the county's comprehensive plan and should be turned down. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Mike Anastasio, Charmaine Mueller, Kathleen Hayden.
Good evening, my name is Mike Anastasio. I live in Livingston District, and I'm speaking for myself. I commend the staff for some great work, however, there are several areas where the proposed conditions are, in my view, inadequate. I'd like to briefly comment on setbacks, screening, and misconceptions. Setbacks up to 350 feet are provided, but only for selected existing homes with setbacks of only 50 feet for many neighboring lots having existing water and sewer installations. 350-foot minimum setbacks should be provided for all property lines around the entire perimeter. Screening also varies from nothing to fairly robust. The county's independent consulting report recommends 350-foot setbacks and dense vegetative buffers to mitigate the solar heat island effect. It stands to reason that dense vegetative buffers and burn should be provided around the entire project. Misconceptions. Regarding a significant misconception that has to do with timbering that was created by S-Power and how that worked its way into the staff report. S-Power has made the claim that they had nothing to do with the timbering operations on multiple parcels of the property which they have negotiated to purchase. They point the finger at the landowners for timbering the land in a manner that has caused problems for the neighboring homes and for the challenges it has created for S-Power as they attempt to be good neighbors. This has been repeated so often that many take it to be a fact, and in fact, it shows up in the staff report. The comments found in Appendix A assume that S-Power had no control of the timbering on any of the property for which they were negotiating. Available survey documents indicate otherwise. Two months ago, S-Power's land survey documents were posted on the county website. The document is a compilation of individual surveys conducted over thirteen months, and each parcel of land in the whole project has been covered by this survey data. The date of the document is September 2018, but the dates on the individual surveys start as early as January 2017. S-Power's negotiations and agreements with the landowners began two years ago, which is before most of the timbering began. S-Power could easily have specified good neighbor buffer requirements to the landowners at the beginning of the process. Why they didn't do that, I do not know. Why does this matter? The staff report with the earlier reference statements in Appendix A uses the supposition that S-Power had no control over how the land was cleared to support the change in use of this land to a utility-scale solar facility. If all or part of the timbering was done with a tacit approval of S-Power, shouldn't that be factored into the impact that this facility is having on the county land and the land use provisions of the comprehensive plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Charmaine Mueller, Kathleen Hayden, and Dan Kulig.
Good evening, my name is Charmaine Mueller, and my family and I have lived in the Livingston District for the past fifteen years. I'm a wife, I'm a mom of four children, and we're all very concerned. I'm speaking as an individual, and I strongly oppose the 500-milliwatt industrial solar plant that's being proposed by the S-Power Corporation. I heard about the large, over 6,000-acre project by word of mouth. I saw the timbering and then the stripping of the land down to the bare soil right by my neighbors' homes. I have not seen much of an attempt to publicize the size and scope of this project. It is huge, way too big for our little county. I have read all the research carefully documented by the Concerned Citizens Group, and I am terrified by their findings. There's enough research to prove that there are many problems with placing this large amount, over 1.8 million panels, into our community. Problems will occur with these glass solar panels with all of our varied weather conditions in our region. Do you remember the earthquake that we all experienced? I do. That will impact the solar panels. What about the mini microbursts? I remember those, do you? That will also impact it. What about the hailstorms? The snow, the thunderstorms? All of these panels will have some type of effect with these. Additionally, there are still problems with the current proposed water solutions. Hooking up a water line to county water, but then making us county folks pay for half of the cost by raising our taxes. I'm opposed to having to pay for a company to hook into our county water line. They should bear all the cost. It's been told to us it's $7 million, and they will be able to put up 3 million. They should put up the entire 7 million if they wanted. Also, we're going to have an impact on our watershed from the toxic chemicals in the solar panels leaching into the soil, and it can work its ways into the local streams and the lakes. My family uses those to swim, to boat, to fish. I'm also concerned about the volume of the semi-trucks that are bringing the solar materials onto our rural roads. I have young drivers in my family that are on those roads. There are no good times for them to come across a large truck barreling down the road. I fear accidents will become a new normal, and Spotsovanians will be the ones harmed. Our roadways are not conducive for this type of project. Anyway, there are over 950 homes in the neighborhood that's adjacent to Site A, and there's another additional 1,000 homes in Spotsylvania that also will be impacted. This is hardly an unpopulated area that they are portraying. Please vote no. We appreciate everything that you all are doing. Thank you.
Kathleen Hayden, Dan Kulig, and Moya Doss.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Hayden, Livingston District, speaking on my own behalf. I have reviewed the staff report on the S-Power solar facility and want to take exception with the conclusion that the project will result in increased tax revenue for the county. The report looks only at the tax revenue that S-Power produces and takes at face value their claim that it will provide, quote, "pulses of economic activity for the community." But it completely ignores the very real risk of home value loss to neighboring properties. I will repeat some of what I and others have said here and to the board of supervisors before. It is my personal experience as a Realtor that buyers are and will avoid buying homes anywhere near the 6,000-acre facility. I have quoted studies that show, that show a 5% to 30% decline in home values when solar plants are built nearby. The closer and more expensive the homes, the greater the percent loss in value. And then consider the fact that the Fawn Lake developer is selling lots to S-Power rather than building homes on them. Clearly, their experienced calculations show it will not be profitable to build once this solar farm, this massive solar facility goes in. Why is this effect being ignored in the county calculations of fiscal impact? If the county would include in their calculations the loss of $567,000 per year in tax revenue from the never-to-be-developed Fawn Lake lots, and it takes only a 10% value loss on the 1,325 homes within a half-mile along the border of these three sites, that's another $531,000 a year. It would total over $1 million per year in lost tax revenue to the county. By the way, this 10% average loss includes those homes that have 1.8 million panels right in their backyard-
Floor computer, please.
Where the value will probably exceed the 10, the loss in value probably exceed the 10%, and it does not include all the parcels without, without homes on them currently. The graph on the monitor shows in red the net effect on county tax revenue when these numbers are included in the analysis. The green line shows S-Power's own numbers that we saw earlier this evening. The only year with a net increase in tax revenue is the first, due largely to a one-time tax rollback payment. By year two, the county nets nothing, and from there, the decreases are steady totaling $27 million lost over the life of this project. The fiscal projections are very different when you factor in the effect this project will have on home values, a variable I don't believe should be forgotten. And for the county residents who are lucky enough not to have their home values affected, it appears to me that they and all county residents should expect a tax increase to make up for this revenue loss essentially paying for S-
Dan Kulig, Moya Doss, Judy Janelle.
Dan Kulig, Livingston District, speaking for myself. I'm here to discuss the scale of the solar project from the point of view of erosion and stormwater control. This project is enormous, 2,800 acres, Site A, 3,500 acres total, larger by a factor of five than any other solar project in Virginia. We are looking at millions of cubic feet of earth to be disturbed, which implies thousands of cubic feet of sediment generated even with only 400 acres of development at a time. The applicant has provided a concept plan in addition to the GDP. It is defined as the detailed plan for Zone E, which is to serve as the model for the remainder of the site's development. However, the applicant's calculations for this detailed plan are listed as preliminary. Later in the report, the applicant goes on to say that E and S controls, as well as stormwater management facilities, will be designed, treating the PV panels themselves as impervious. But it does not reference the method to be used, nor when this will be done. As a reminder, neither the Virginia E and S Management Handbook nor the Virginia Stormwater Management Handbook, which are DEQ's bibles, deal with stormwater flow in areas populated by solar panel arrays. There is much more than just the neighboring properties at risk here. The wetlands that are internal to this project area, once violated, will require major renovation to recover, if at all. Is the E and S design adequately engineered for the storm that drops two, three, four inches of rain all at once? Don't know, it's not done. There is a performance bond required in Chapter Eight of the county code. I know myself, I believe the planning commissioners and the board of supervisors might like to see the proposed value of this bond. I'd like some assurance that as a taxpayer, I am protected against the cost to recover from an unforeseen weather condition that seems to always occur. Given the size of the area to be disturbed, the size of this bond should be significant. This project is totally out of scope for this area. Spotsylvania County should not be the E and S test site for S-Power's initial entry onto the East Coast. The fifth-largest solar project in the U.S., the county is gaining nothing but is setting itself up to be subjected to significant and unnecessary risks. How much risk are you taking on our behalf if you approve this project? Thank you.
Moya Doss, Judy Janelle, followed by Dick Janelle.
If you folks could come right up to the podium and cue right behind her, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, this video was produced by McSims Inc. to advertise their product line of trench burners, which is better than open surface burning, but sure- burners, which is better than open-surface burning, but sure does not eliminate smoke or ashes, as you can see. Currently, county ordinances say that you can do controlled burn on zoned agricultural land. What's to stop them from not burning all of the tree waste, stumps, roots, and anything else they find over there? Please notice the smoke that's being blown away by the blower from the burned pit. Look at all the dirt that's also being thrown into the pit along with the timber waste. That's going to just create more smoke and make it take even longer. Likely several thousand tons of timber waste exists on all three sites. With perfect weather conditions, it can burn six to 10 tons per hour. They can reduce six to 10 tons of timber waste per hour, which sounds great, doesn't it? Well, 1,000 tons alone would take 100 to 166 hours or 12 to 20 days, and we are talking several thousand tons. So we could be looking at as much as a year of burning and smoke and ashes. We all know there is no perfect weather here in Spotsylvania. All of us from Spotsia are aware that wood that's been on the ground for eight months to a year, most likely what this has all been, is going to be wet and soggy, and we know what happens when you try and ignite wet and soggy wood. You'll have smoke that'll be billowing out, it'll be horrible, and it takes forever to burn if you even get it to start. We're talking stumps, branches, roots, you name it. What about the days when it's so hot here when we have ozone alerts? Welcome to Virginia. What about days when it's been raining, torrential flooded roads, streams, overflowing gutters of rain? Welcome to Virginia. What about when there are watering bans and no leaf burning ban? Welcome to Virginia. Burning in cold months will keep the smoke low due to atmospheric conditions. Trench burners are only meant to be used for a couple days before the trench will collapse, and a perfect trench is needed to attain the advertised burn rates. High-water table, rocky soil, numerous roots can make digging that perfect trench very difficult. On a personal level, I have a child who has asthma. Imagine the fears of having, how many times am I going to end up with that child in the hospital, in the ER because of breathing conditions? I had a sister I took care of for two years who had duoscoliosis and kyphosis, 37% pulmonary function. How can somebody like that even breathe if you have all of that smoke coming into your neighborhood with the winds? You can't say that it's not going to happen. So I beg all of you to please take that into consideration when you're making your decisions. Thank you.
Judy Janelle, followed by Dick Janelle and Jim Smith.
I'm Judy Janelle from Livingston District, and I'm here to talk about burning. The SUP must prohibit all burning on sites to protect the health of the county residents. The CDC, the EPA, and the American Lung Association research states that microscopic particles, a byproduct of wildfires and prescribed burning, present a very serious health risk to children, pregnant women, the elderly, people with heart disease, asthma, bronchitis, COPD, and emphysema. The American Lung Association article, "How Wild Fires Affect Our Health," from 2016, direct quote, "Wildfires threaten lives directly, and wildfire smoke can affect us all. They spread air pollution not only nearby, but thousands of miles away. Smoke from fires in the north and west also threaten the lung health of Americans thousands of miles away. In fact, one fire alone, the wildfire pollutants reached people in North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota, and Iowa from a fire in northern Canada." I quote from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, their 2017 report on air monitoring. Fires generate irritating and corrosive gases. Aldehydes and acroian are released when wooden cellulose burn. These products cause intense tearing, coughing, choking, but acroian is highly toxic to lung tissue. It causes protein destruction in the deep lung tissue. How do you fix it? You can't, once it happens, once we ingest it. There are several thousand tons of clear-cut debris on Sites A, B, and C. The applicant states in an emergency response plan, they intend to mulch debris for use on the project site, but then they say in the event material cannot be mulched or used on the project site, they would use the special incinerator devices that Moya just talked about. Burning of this magnitude is unprecedented in Spotsylvania County. Extensive trench burning will propel large quantities of microscopic particles, two microns or less, into the atmosphere, and it will threaten the health of the nearby residents as well as the children at Brock Road Elementary School, which is just three miles downwind from Site A. Residents surrounding the site, as well as the Fawn Lake residents, include the senior citizens, the pregnant women, the children, people with heart disease, asthma, bronchitis, COPD, and emphysema. The damaging smoky air conditions will be exacerbated by the burning damp-wet debris, rainy-day trench burning, trenches left smoldering after working hours, and the microscopic combustion particles suspended close to the surface by temperature inversions. Should there be a brush fire from a decent-
Dick Janelle, Jim Smith, and Russ Mueller.
Floor computer, please.
Richard Janelle, Livingston District, speaking for myself. I was pleased to see the Planning Commission staff report on SUP 18001 includes several necessary conditions to mitigate potential fire hazards on S-Power Site A. Unfortunately, the report did not include requirements for S-Power to provide 24/7 onsite firefighting capability and a 300-foot fire break around the periphery of the site. The lives of several thousand citizens and their property will be put at risk as a result. The onsite 24/7 firefighting capability is necessary to ensure a fire can be contained and extinguished onsite. In the event that a wildfire originating on the site gets out of control, a 300-foot fire break around the site boundary is necessary because local firefighting units will likely not be able to reach the location of the fire before it puts the lives and property at risk. I refer you to the map shown on the screen to explain why. The map shows Sites A, B, and C. Site A is approximately 4.7 miles wide from east to west and two miles north and south. The red dots indicate the existing and proposed entrances to the sites. The closest fire station to Site A is Number 7 Wilderness, which is five miles east of the Buckland Road entrance you see directly above where it says Site A on the map. Firefighting units would have to travel narrow, curvy, paved, and unpaved roads to reach the site entrance, then navigate as much as two miles through multiple sub-six-section gates and narrow aisles between solar arrays. An optimistic estimate of the average speed fire vehicles could maintain over the distances and road conditions described is 30 miles per hour. At that speed, it would take as long as 14 minutes for firefighters to reach the scene of a fire in the eastern part of Site A. Wildfire can travel at a rate of one mile in four minutes, faster if driven by wind. At that rate, a wildfire would spread to populated areas north and east of Site A well before firefighters could arrive. Response times to reach points in the west and southwest sections of Site A would be even longer. Note also the large expanse of white area to the south and southeast of Site A. That is an old-growth forest, part of which is a wildlife management area. There are no paved or gravel roads through there, only trails suitable for ATVs. If a fire spread from Site A to that area, there would be no way to stop it before reaching West Caparthen Road. One last point as regards the 300-foot-wide fire break requirement. That is the distance recommended by the National Forest Service on the downwind side of a controlled burn. Since wind direction and speed vary significantly in our area over time, the 300-foot-
Thank you, sir.
Jim Smith, Russ Mueller, Rebecca Nun.
No Jim Smith.
Is Jim Smith here?
Are you my time to rush?
Wish we could do that, but we can't.
I'm Russ Mueller from Livingston District, and I speak for myself on the water issue. Based on the county's own consulting reports, which raise serious questions relating the use of wells to provide water during construction, I believe it is prudent that the SUP include a provision requiring S-Power to use only county water, which can be obtained through bulk means as well as from an upgrade to the county system, as we heard from Ben Lovdity, your county director of Public Utilities. The use of wells should be prohibited, even as a backup, inasmuch as bulk water purchases are available to meet the need. This solution, which I believe is supported by other county officials, would have the benefit of, one, eliminating the risk of damage to the aquifer, resident wells, and the springs feeding Fawn Lake; secondly, eliminating the additional costs and time required for S-Power to meet all the consultant recommendations; and, thirdly, improving the county water system water pressure for higher protection and residence. The risk of letting industrial levels of water be extracted from the aquifer is not only in the Geosir report I gave you in March, but in the county consultant reports and the staff report that limits extraction to 500,000 gallons a month over a 10-day period. Even the National Park Service said it needs more information on whether S-Power groundwater withdrawal will negatively impact water resources of the Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania National Military Park. The consultant report states that the S-Power consultant review does not meet industry standards for evaluating the potential impact on existing groundwater conditions and users. To rectify the shortcomings, they recommend, as I have, to develop groundwater mitigation plan to eliminate adverse effects, develop a groundwater monitoring plan, establishing a minimum of four monitoring wells and to be measured and recorded, and also to require the installation of water treatment facilities to ensure harmful levels of cadmium, chromium, arsenic, and other toxins do not contaminate the project. All of these conditions, recommended by the consultants, myself, are necessary to prevent severe damage. Would become superfluous if the Planning Commission, if you folks, use common-sense solution by revising the SUP, require the sole use of county water and prohibiting use of onsite wells. If S-Power wants county water, let them pay for all of it. Thank you.
Rebecca Nun, Steve Nun, Nancy McNamara.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Nun, and I don't know what district I'm in because I just moved here recently from Chicago. I wanted to be here this evening because I think we represent kind of unheard voice heretofore, and that is of the prospective buyer. And upon arriving here, we heard great things about Fawn Lake, and we've been there looking at real estate ever since. And I just want to say that, having done our own research and reading all the reports, I see no problem whatsoever with a public health issue. Every environmental issue has been addressed perfectly well by S-Power. We're looking to make a major investment, and, by the way, we represent 30 votes, which is 60 when you come from Chicago. And just to, you know, I'm real excited about being a neighbor here, and I want to be part of a community that's progressive and responsible for this planet, because we all want to leave it better for our kids. I have read that 903 report. I'm so impressed with S-Power. I don't know where they are, because very few people would go-
Folks, please.
-very few people would go to that effort, that length. And I don't have a dog in the hunt here. I mean, I just want to buy a nice house, and that's why we're looking at Fawn Lake, and I'm fully supportive, as is my family, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Nun, Nancy McNamara, Charles Tuck.
Folks, I will call this to order. The comments are to the public commission, the Planning Commission here, and I expect decorum and civility here, please.
Hi, my name is Stephen Nun. I am a Fredericksburg resident, and I'm the president of Pevon. I'm here on behalf of my company. We moved to Spotsylvania County earlier this year. You may have seen it, a bunch of the supervisors came to my grand opening in October. We put a 100,000-square-foot factory here in Spotsylvania. I'm in favor of the SUP for one reason, one reason only, the jobs that it's going to bring. County did a great job helping me get this business here to put my first factory in, planning to put a second factory in, and everything was awesome, and all the promises were lived up to, with the exception of one, and that was jobs. I'm having a lot of trouble filling jobs, and when I heard about the power plant coming, the solar power plant coming in, it's going to create, I believe, I heard, 700 to 800 jobs. These are jobs that the county needs, I need, factories like mine need. I've also found out, after I've moved here and put my factory here, that seven out of 10 residents of Spotsylvania don't work in Spotsylvania. They get up every morning, they leave the county, mostly driving north. The jobs that S-Power is going to bring in are the types of jobs that I need in a factory. We need those types of people coming in, working. Again, I'll be making a decision about where I'm going to put my second factory. Hopefully, we'll be able to put it in Spotsylvania. I encourage you to pass this permit.
Nancy McNamara, Charles Tuck, Stephanie Taylor.
Nancy McNamara, Livingston District. The Wall Street Journal, December 1st weekend, carried an editorial stating that we live in a post-truth era. This is alarming because it assumes no truth. Citizens who communicate with local leaders may still request honesty. Therefore, relating to the solar power request, I ask that you honor truth. You honor the comprehensive plan, the 2002 plan, with its concern for history and our natural resources. You will provide, in writing, public reports of the progress and response to our questions from each previous meeting. The newspaper editorial asked the question which Punches Pilot asked of Jesus: What is truth? No answer was given, and the uneducated crowd received its request for the death of Christ. S-Power has only provided partial truth in advertising. We have access to the truth only through personal research. If independent experts had been invited to speak initially, citizens would have had more opportunity to learn the truth about the permit request. Concerned citizens worked to find experts and share information but could not reach the entire county. They do, however, present truthful information. Hope exists that this independent voice will be heard by our leaders in significant areas. The solar permit request uses the term "solar farm." This is an advertising term which inclines customers to think of agriculture. The project is industrial; it is not a farm. The project should be called "solar factory," which is more truthful. The use of water in this project is dramatic evidence of the countywide effect, which would occur in approval. This is still unknown by citizens and administrators. Today, tonight, I tried to understand everything that was on the screen, but I was trying to, you know, fully comprehend, and it was difficult. Still, at this late date, a good producer knows his product from the start and only sells when it's ready. Previous comprehensive plans have validity in their essence. Go back to 2002 and study why water was protected at that time. Truth is encompassing. Chief components of the S-Power permit fail the truth test, including a written response on effects from the sale of the size of the land lost to the county as wasteland at decommission with metals and cadmium in the soil, failure to respect history, disrespect to county citizens at large by leaving them ignorant of negative impact, traffic, including emergency problems, and grave interference with settled community life. With no questions yet answered fully, we can only expect Good Friday and not Easter.
Thank you, ma'am.
Charles Tuck, Stephanie Taylor, Lou Sherman.
Pass. Pass.
Charles Tuck.
Pass.
Stephanie Taylor, Lou Sherman, Bill Hayden.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Taylor. I reside in Livingston District of Spotsylvania County, and I speak for myself. I would like to introduce my son Luke. This is him. He is an active 10-year-old honor roll student at Brock Road Elementary School. He plays guitar, and as you can tell by the picture, he plays a lot of Fortnite. He is also involved in many organized sports, including soccer, swimming, basketball, and running. Most importantly- Most importantly, I introduce you to him because he has asthma. In his short 10 years on this earth, he has missed so much school, birthday parties, soccer games, and swim meets, all because of his condition. The common cold, virus, or allergen exposure takes him weeks, sometimes months, to recover. Treatment involves multiple doctor visits, costly nebulizer treatments, lengthy and heavy administration of steroids, and at times, around-the-clock care, just so he can breathe. With the current status of the SUP, S-Power will have the ability to practice open burning. A 3,000-foot limit is simply not enough, period. Open burning should not be allowed at all. Open burning will have a significant impact on all of our citizens' health, not just my son's. No doubt, my son's ability to breathe will suffer if open burning near us occurs. Allergens released from the burning of timber waste will cause my son to miss even more of his childhood. He will miss more school, sporting events, and time with friends due to unwarranted increased asthma exacerbations. First, I ask you to tell S-Power to go home, find another place. Their business is not welcome here. Second, if that cannot be done, I ask that you demand S-Power to significantly reduce the scale of this project. It's simply too big for our small Livingston District. Finally, I ask that wording be put into place in the special use permit, making it illegal for S-Power to perform open burns in Spotsylvania County. My son's health and ability to breathe are in your hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lou Sherman, Bill Hayden, Kathy Lavello.
My name is Lou Sherman. I live in the Livingston District, and I'm speaking for myself. I'm aware that the county secured the services of Duberry Consulting to review the decommissioning plan presented by S-Power, and I'm pleased to note that their report included many stipulations that we had recommended in the past. Of particular interest is their recommendation that the county require bonding the actual cost of the decommissioning and not consider any claims of potential revenue from recycling. Duberry also suggested that the bond be at the $50 million level. I urge that should you decide to approve the SUP application, you include these requirements in the approval. However, more than anything, I urge that you deny the SUP application. I say this for the following reasons. First of all, an underfunded surety bond would inevitably lead to severe financial issues for the county, as I'm sure you are aware. I know you won't want to be stuck holding the bag when end of project life or project default occurs. Yet, S-Power has tried, in my opinion, to deliberately under-report the cost of decommissioning this project. There can only be two reasons for this. One, they want to save money by not obtaining a properly valued surety bond. Or, two, they can just sign the bond over to the county and walk away. Neither of these options gives me a warm, fuzzy feeling. Secondly, while Microsoft has seemingly made this a profitable venture with their agreement to purchase 315 megawatts of the 400-megawatt Site A, I am concerned that S-Power relies heavily on just one purchaser. As I understand it, the agreement with Microsoft is for 15 years. What happens when the 15 years are completed? Will Microsoft re-up, so to speak? After all, this is a 30-year venture. What if they don't? What if the economy necessitates that Microsoft cut back on nonessential expenses before the 15 years are up? What will S-Power do to get commitments to fill this now quite large gap? How many businesses are willing to pay two or three times more for their electricity under any economic situation? There is another reason, I believe, for the county to require a sufficiently large surety bond with adequate protections for all of us. S-Power continues to claim that there is an adequate market for recyclable material, stating that their track record in the industry allows us to be comfortable in our estimates. I'm glad that they're so sure of their track record, but I'd like to know how many other projects have gone on for 25 or 30 years and have already been decommissioned. Are you aware of any? Has S-Power provided evidence of its decommissioning costs and/or revenues from recycling? They state that solar panels have value beyond the life of the project and would be reused or redeployed in the event of a decommissioning. How can that be when the efficiency of solar panels?
Thank you very much.
Bill Hayden, Kathy Lavello, Kevin Sheedle.
My name is Bill Hayden. I live in Livingston District. I'm speaking on my own behalf. I'd like to address the commission about three different points. The first of which briefly is going to be on setbacks, which has already been covered to a large degree. I've got a couple of things I'd like to emphasize. Secondly, I'd like to talk a little bit about enforcement and oversight with regard to any conditions that are put on the special use permit if it's granted. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about systems and disaster recovery issues that I don't think have been addressed up until this point. With regard to setbacks, the Duberry report, as others have said, addressed a very narrow issue with regard to when setbacks should be put in place, how far away they should be, et cetera, really addressing only the heat island effects and concerns related to it. They should have, I believe, addressed the full panoply of concerns that others have talked about here and made a more holistic recommendation about how far away the default setback should be for all of the homes that are now in potential harms way for known and potential risks associated with the solar facility, but also future homes. If we're to believe that these effects are going to be as minimal as some have claimed, then the periphery of the solar facility would be places where 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, the long-term view that's being presented, people would presumably want to live there, and they should be given the same protections, people, farmers, all the rest that are in place for people who are on those properties, on adjacent properties today. The setbacks are first and frontline control and mitigant, and they have to be established the right way at the outset. One of the reasons being that the cadmium telluride panels that we're talking about here are known to be most dangerous at two different stages. One is the end of their lifespan, which has been talked about, but secondly, it's at the beginning of their lifespan when they're be put in. It has to be done right from the start. Secondly, on oversight and enforceability, self-policing doesn't work. The conditions need to include some mechanism for an independent third party to audit the compliance of S-Power with all of the conditions that have been laid out in here and make sure that they're held accountable, and they're fully responsible for toeing the line as it regards any of these difficult conditions that may be put on them. The last thing I'd like to say very briefly is little has been said about systems hardening, cybersecurity, and maintenance of S-Power's systems. They need to, if this goes through, there's going to be a huge target in our backyards for cyber intrusions and systems maintenance. The SCADA systems that they're using are notorious for being vulnerable to such attacks, and also...
Thank you very much.
Kathy Lavello, Kevin Sheedle, and Vivian Stanley, who is speaking on behalf of a group.
Okay, I'm Katherine Lavello, Livingston District. Thank you for listening to us here. I'm going to go off my prepared remarks a little bit because we've heard so much already today. I ask you to please vote no on this SUP. An SUP should do no harm or at least benefit the citizens in some way after asking for an exception to our comprehensive plan, but they don't. It is all about greed. They're building a massive, monstrous solar facility that we've already seen is unprecedented how close it's going to be to our housing areas. We've talked about begging for a 350-foot setback. No, we need a thousand or 2,000-foot setback. This is in our backyard of our homes. Our homes have been here. They are coming in like carpetbaggers to steal our land, sell their energy up to Microsoft, and disappear. We need assurances that we will be protected. You've heard many reasons here that we can already turn this down. We've heard about concerns about the water. We are very concerned that the aquifer could go dry, or we could be getting pollution. We worry about the muddy runoff. You know about the Essex Project and the horrible disaster they had in a very tiny solar facility that had massive runoff problems. We talked about decommissioning. Again, there is no way to know exactly what it's going to cost. Right now, in Japan, they're well ahead of us with solar power. They don't know how to decommission and then recycle these panels, so they're stuck with them. So are we going to be stuck with them? I think you need to vote against this monstrous, costly experiment in Spotsylvania County. They are just here to drop in because they found some cheap, easy land and that they thought they could run over all of us Spotsylvania citizens. This is no benefit to us whatsoever. It's been shown that by taxes, we will have a net negative, so tax rates will go up, so we can support them, providing power to Microsoft and others. That does not help us at all. It will not bring people into the area. People don't want to be next to a solar utility or any type of industrial utility. This is not a farm. It is an industrial plant. It is just not worth it. Spotsylvania County would be the laughingstock of the whole United States when S-Power disappears and their thousands of little shell corporations go with them, and they leave us thousands of acres of toxic fluorovoltated glass for our children to pay for. Why should we take all these risks? There's no gain to us. Thank you.
Kevin Sheedle, Vivian Stanley, Michael O'Beere.
Hello, I'm Kevin Sheedle. I'm speaking on my own behalf, and I'm an 11-year taxpayer in Livingston District within Spotsylvania County. Tonight, you're hearing once again from Spotsylvania County taxpayers who have done extensive research and provided this planning board and the board of supervisors with factual evidence supporting a denial of the S-Power applications for special use permits required for it to build and operate an unprecedentedly huge industrial-scale solar utility. I add my voice to this request for denial. If the three SUP applications do proceed against the desires of voting taxpayers, I ask that the conditions put forth by members of the concerned citizens of Spotsylvania County and other county residents be incorporated into the special use permits. You know, watching the memorial service today for President George H.W. Bush, I could not help but think of the word "legacy." The S-Power project will define our legacy as well as your legacy. In addition to the environmental, health, safety, and related issues I am concerned about, what scares me most actually is the county's potential inability to enforce conditions placed and the lack of accessible financial recourse. It was my understanding that when Duberry was hired, the county had to go to S-Power for $75,000. When they don't comply with the conditions within the SUP and/or the development agreement, who's going to come up with the cash to force them to do what was promised? The investor owners are shielded under cover of limited liability company entities. There are no assets. There are no deep pockets. A commitment from a president, a CEO, et cetera, those guarantees will not be the entities that sign on these agreements. Trust me. I have 20 years working with SUPs for large companies, and I've seen time and time again that there's no money. So show us the money. And I think as fiduciaries for the residents of Spotsylvania County, it is your duty to exhaust through due diligence and put in place safeguards against ramifications of default. Advance cash, show us the money, and bonds should be required under the SUP conditions and development agreement. There are several bonds that can be put in place: performance bonds, operations and maintenance bonds, decommissioning bonds, adequate insurance, all of which should be evaluated, if not annually, at a minimum every three years.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Vivian Stanley, Michael O'Beere, David Wilson.
Vivian Stanley, Livingston District. I'm speaking for we, the people. I have on black tonight. Normally, I wear red, but I'm wearing it because we have observed Veterans Day just a short while back. All of the military who gave their arms, their legs, their lives, so that we in America can live in freedom without fear, fear of anything which includes cadmium poisoning in the air, soil, and water. But ladies and gentlemen, if we allow a solar company to come in to steal everything that our military has sacrificed their limbs and their lives, then we are less than honorable. We are worthless. I have a proposal for the planning commission that some of you, I know I've given it to you guys several times, but I can't seem to get it put into the SUP for some reason. It's a mystery to me. This is what I would suggest. The following is a stipulation to be added to the special use permit that S-Power is requesting. It as follows: In the event that the special permit is issued, despite the opposition of the Livingston District citizens, every homeowner in the Livingston District whose property is adjacent to the solar property and does not want to remain in the district because of strong fears of deadly environmental health hazards the solar factory will bring with it and because this is being forced upon them, it will be paid by S-Power Solar Company, an amount equal to two times the market value of the home and land plus $15,000 for moving expenses. And this would go to everybody who lives adjacent to the death camp. The market value will be decided by mutual agreement between the homeowner and the listing value of an independent real estate company such as Villo or Realtor.com. The amount has been determined to compensate the homeowner for the house, land, and major disruption of the family's lives, relief of the fear of the poison in the air, soil, and water, relief of the fear of terrorist attacks or solar meltdown. Upon receipt of the funds from S-Power, because Spotsy wouldn't pay for it, the homeowner will then pay off any mortgage and taxes owed on the property. The solar company will then own the individual properties and do with them as they please. The former homeowner will then have eight months to vacate and three months after school for those with kids. This is a very fair proposal, and we do not want solar in our community or imposed on our families' health and well-being. Now, one more point. I noticed that that's 537 trips a day on West Catharpen. I live on West Catharpen. I wouldn't even be able to go to the store to buy toilet paper because I would never get off my property. S-Power is willing to buy acreage in Fawn Lake, so there should be no problem with requiring them to buy the properties of the people who don't want to stay and be poisoned. I also have a couple notes on something that somebody else said, the protected species. It was very good that they're protecting the little weasels and the little rats and all that kind of stuff, but how about the homo sapiens? Worth being threatened and endangered. As for the water costs, as soon as to pay the water, tell S-Power to go hit the road. We don't need them, we don't want them, and we do not want this. We don't want it altered. We don't want to change this or change that. We just want them to get the devil out of here. Thank you.
Michael O'Beere, David Wilson, Calais Wilson.
Yes, my name is Michael O'Beere. I live at 11201 Chancellor Meadows Lane. I'm a grand zero of the solar factory. I am 50 foot off the property line. It's there. I got a copy of Google Earth of Spotsylvania a year ago. Better save it and frame it because it's never going to look like it again if this thing goes through. Well, let's talk to the character of S-Power. In that packet of papers I give you, there's three different articles about them not working toward SUP, not working with the county staff to do it, going behind their backs and sitting there and moving wind turbines close to the property lines. There's different articles in there, but their character of work, and we don't need it here in Spotsylvania. We've got enough crooks here. We don't need anymore. Well, let's go with Microsoft. Microsoft has figured out that they could do a PPA and a VPNA, which eliminates them from any risk of the solar factory not producing enough electricity. What it does is it says green credits, but yet it lets them use alternative... What it does is it says green credits, but yet it lets them use alternative sources of electricity, which is a grid, which everybody knows, once it goes in that, you don't know what you're getting. But they have come out a way to take care of that. They also said it stated in this article that they wanted to go green. They want to stay with green power, solar, but yet they want to control everything, but they don't want it near them. So if they don't want it near them, why should we have it by us? Let them have it on their roof panels. You know, there's enough panels in Northern Virginia that they could probably do us and them both. Well, let's go back to their character. Riverhead planning, they tried to slide in a little extra kilowatts in there. So they caught up with it and said, nope, we're not doing it because y'all went behind our backs. Well, they turned around and, you know, put a moratorium on it right now. That was about two months ago. You know, then they, you know, like a bunch of spoiled kids, they wouldn't sell them a piece of land, so they turned around and sued aboard and everybody else in that little town they were trying to get land from. Also states that they run two different LLCs, you know, under one Sustainable Property Holdings LLC. And the other one is FTS Management Tenants to LLC. And they're both known as S-Power. So just like the man said the other day, who is going to pay for this thing when it goes bad? You know, we want a corporation to sign the paperwork that the, to pay for us when it goes bad. You know, and they're talking about how much they're a solely-owned company? They sold 24% of them off, and this was just November 7th. So they don't own every bit that they say they're owning. So, and then there's other articles in that package talking about the Viewshed and Microsoft's contract.
Thank you, Mr. O'Beere.
David Wilson, Kalay Wilson, Berman Meadows.
Good evening. I'm David Wilson. I'm a resident of Spotsylvania for 25-plus years. And I just want to give a different perspective than what a lot of people are speaking about today, and it's a perspective of what the land is currently used for. I've been here for 25 years and this land is owned by a timber company. I have a bird's eye view of the land that is currently used. I have one of the largest sections of Deer Park. I own 11 acres and I can view at hundreds of acres behind my property to the right of my property. This company has constantly come in and deforested the property, year after year after year. It's a never-ending process. The fears people have of silting and things like that, these are things that are currently going on. These are things that are not currently regulated. If you go behind all of our properties, you can see there's no silt fencing. There's none of these things are currently in effect. The land that they're referring to is completely deforested now. This is already done. The situations that they feel about with controlled burns and things like that, these are situations that already go on. I can't tell you how many times I've come home and thought my house was on fire because I see a plume of smoke burning out there. So these are the things that are currently going on. Now, we have a company that is wanting to come in after all of this has been done and they want to put in solar panels and put up half of the area they want to regrow the vegetation. They're offering to bring in a company that's going to minimize traffic. They're going to come in one time, build their thing. They're not going to deal with any of the water issues that we have. They've already offered to bring in their own water. So in all honesty, the situation that we currently have is the fears that they currently face. What we have coming for us with this company is something that to us, it's a blessing because now we won't have to deal with the deforestation. We won't have to deal with the constant burns. We won't have to deal with all the erosion issues. This is a one-time project. It'll be done and it'll restore to privacy and restore our peace and quiet. So we are for this project, those of us that have a bird's eye view of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kalay Wilson, Berman Meadows, Dave Meadows.
Hello, I'm Kalay Wilson, a 15-year-old Spotsilvanian, and I've come today to talk about S-Power. Now, as other residents of Spotsylvania, most of us have received falsified propaganda from concerned citizens of Spotsylvania. I would like to talk about their-
Folks, please, all voices will be heard.
I would like to talk about their claims. Toxins will not leak out of the panels as they are built and proven to withstand even the strongest of natural disasters. These panels are raised, so there is no need to remove weeds. We should be more scared about large-scale neighborhoods such as Fond Lake that bring in commercial herbicide and commercial pesticide companies, not to mention all the homeowners with fertilizers, roundups, and mosquito joes which use an immeasurable amount of herbicides and pesticides. Wildlife is already displaced by the logging and will get a chance they've never had to settle and build their homes. They're not destroying 2,000 acres. All the land that is being used has already been destroyed by the logging company. Once again, your wells will not run dry and your water will not be contaminated as these panels have been proven not to leak and the water comes from the inner county. We should be more concerned about large-scale neighborhoods such as Fond Lake, which have had fire hydrants in the new area running for three months on end. The biggest issue with runoff is the silting that's from the clearing of the land by the logging company. S-Power will help this by re-establishing ground coverage, and I have faith in the county of Spotsylvania for providing erosion control and regulations. All the land being used has already been cleared by the tree logging company and it will not be using all the land purchased, only half. S-Power is not building a huge solar farm with 1.8 million panels. These figures are falsified. The largest solar farm in the country only has 1.7 million panels and they are not using every square inch of land again, just small clusters throughout the land which cover less than half of the purchased land. The largest solar farm east of the Rockies will not be the project here, but will continue to be the Comanche Solar Project. This will not be the fifth-largest in the country and will not even break the top 10 if every square inch of land was used. Spotsylvania does get something. We'll get more money from taxing S-Power than what we currently get from the tree logging company and jobs which the tree logging company does not offer. Your water costs will not go up and neither will your energy cost. Your taxes are not being raised as S-Power covers everything from construction to checkups. Your property value will stay the same as this land is classified as agricultural and will continue to be classified as agricultural. S-Power will not be noisy but peaceful, which is a change from what we've had for years. There is screening, which is immediate, unlike what the tree logging company offers, and S-Power is using at least 50 feet barriers. There are no historical landmarks on the land being sold. If there was, the tree logging company has already gotten rid of them. S-Power will be using the roads at times which they are not busy, which is a big change for people like me who are living on Catharpen.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Berman Meadows, Dave Meadows, Fred Meadows.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dave Meadows. I live in the Livingston District. My siblings and I have been long-term residents of Spotsylvania County. Since 1965, we started purchasing land here, and we feel strongly that we've been a landowner here for a long time. And we were here before Chancellor Meadows was here, before Chancellor Travers Den was here, and before Fond Lake existed. We feel like we should have the right to use our land and to sell our land to whom we wish. We are from a small coal mining town in West Virginia where our parents struggled to teach us to love the Lord Jesus Christ, to recognize right from wrong, and to treat all our fellow humans with respect and dignity. We realize that we are of the age now and the health conditions that we have to give up farming. My brother Berman was going to speak tonight, but he can't. He has one lung. My brother Fred will speak later. He'll have trouble getting up here. We invested in, we thought about investing in windmills and investigated it, in solar farms, renting the land, and other possibilities since we can no longer farm it ourselves. Foresters advised us that our timber should be cut, actually should have been cut. We began the process of timbering some of the land. This is when S-Power representatives came to us with an offer to purchase our jointly-owned 400 acres. The offer that they made was not extravagant but adequate for us as a family to investigate the company and make the good faith decision to sell our land to them. We signed a conditional sales agreement with S-Power. We have become more and more confident it was the right thing to do, not only for us but also for the county, the state, the nation, and in fact, the world. Global warming is a fact. Global warming is a fact. This project will reduce global warming significantly more than any minor problems that it may cause. I must admit that I would rather look out my sunroom window and see our old farmhouse and some of our fields, but I'm going to see solar panels. However, it's the right thing to do. Renewable energy sources help reduce global warming. That's a fact. It frustrates me to see headlines in our local paper like the head Sunday, November the 24th. The headline's read, "Spotsylvania Residents Push Back on Solar Project." First of all, I would argue that some Spotsylvania residents are opposed to the project and most of them from Fond Lake and are in this room. Most Spotsylvania residents, most Spotsylvania residents support renewable energy. I was also disappointed when Fond Lake residents were using public property-
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Fred Meadows, followed by Vic Meadows, and Tim Tarzier.
Thank you. My name is Fred Meadows. I live in Livingston District. You know, myself and my family have given a lot of consideration to the development of the Spotsylvania land for renewable energy, but as my brother said, it's just the right thing to do. And we felt that S-Power would take it in the direction that we really wanted to see it go. We thought of the possible uses of the land. If it doesn't go to solar energy, things like revert back to a tree farm, that's not going to happen. Have you seen the prices of lumber nowadays? It's not going to happen. Maybe in a music park, maybe a motocross theme park. There's crazy things that any kind of thing that might have happened. We've got a great place here. Location, 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 you know? We're near the beach, the mountains, you know, everything that we might need to fulfill our lives. And it's easy to expect that something would move in there that we really don't want to happen, but the production of energy, it contributes to everybody's good life, the life we enjoy. We bought property in the early 60s, mid 60s, and who would have thought at that time that we'd see big panel lines crossing our property that's produced from not solar panels but produced from nuclear energy? We have been very conscious about environmental issues. We've got an award from the state for the most clean farm in the area that year. But our personal mission has been most critical to us. We've been conscious stewards of what our maker, God, has allowed us to have. He's allowed us to work it. He's allowed to enjoy it. But now, we want to be allowed to pass our property along correctly. That's what we're seeking to do. I'll be 82 years old in a few days. I don't want a few well-intentioned people from a relatively elitist neighborhood dictating how I can use, how I can use my own property. Did I say that incorrectly?
No, continue, sir.
Just to set the record, I have a scientific degree in chemistry. I have a master's in public-
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Vic Meadows, Tim Tarzier, Sarah Meadows.
My name is Victor Meadows and I live in Thorburn Farm Lane. Whatever happened to the rights of property owners? My brothers and I started buying land in Spotsylvania County over 50 years ago. We have paid taxes to grow timber and raise cattle on that land all these years. We paid to have our timber reviewed by a professional about four years ago. He said it was time and even past time for much of our timber to be harvested. The people that don't like us harvesting our timber all moved into the area long after we had listed this land at the courthouse as timberland. If they did not want to live next to timberland, they should have checked out the courthouse to see if the land they were building next to was timberland, expecting that someday timberland would be harvested. In a couple of years, it will be green again with many saplings getting 12-foot tall. We are highly blessed to live in Virginia where reforestation is quick and complete. When we began buying our land in Spotsylvania County again over 50 years ago, we hoped someday that this land would be a resource to help in our own retirement. We all worked hard at our regular jobs and spent weekends working at the farm. But now, I, the youngest, am almost 67, and my oldest brother is 87. Two of our brothers have passed. One has had a stroke and gets around with much difficulty, and one collapsed long and also struggles to get around. It is time, or probably past time, to sell our property. I felt it was a gift from God when S-Power contacted us about buying our property to build a solar farm. The timing was perfect, and the use of the land for green energy was a huge plus for us as we have always considered being a good steward of the land as a huge priority. By the way, we won the Chesapeake Bay Clean Farm Award for farm practices that we embraced. Now, we are trying to partner with S-Power to do the right thing at the perfect time, but people that don't own our land or the rights to our land don't want us to use our land as we see fit. Some way, it seems un-American. One more thing, I'm the only one of my siblings that does not live next to the land proposed in the inclusion for the solar farm. I live a few miles away from the farm in the Chancellor District. My wife and I live in a beautiful 11-acre parcel and love the view we've been blessed to enjoy for the past 17 and a half years. We are surrounded on three sides by an old farm with two beautiful silos and an old barn, as well as clumps of trees and rolling fields in soybean or corn. That land is now becoming a subdivision. It will be 68 houses, roads, driveways, etc. The old silos and the barn have been smashed and the soybean fields are now weeds and bare dirt. Does this make me happy? No, but it is not my property. The elderly ladies that owned the land now need the money that they had invested in the property to provide for their care in the remaining years. Please vote to approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Tarzier, Sarah Meadows, Jim Meadows.
Tim Tarzier, I live in the Livingston District. I'm speaking for myself. I believe it's necessary that the Planning Commission should require a condition that bars any use of phosphorus or similar fertilizer, toxic, geotoxic, and other chemicals during construction or operation of the solar facility, and that only the most efficient and least toxic pesticides and herbicides are used, and that no chemical cleaning agents be used. Also, the special use permit should require that the county give pre-approval of the use of any other chemicals and not otherwise prohibited, and that the application of such chemicals be done by certified professionals. I believe if the special use permit that does not contain the conditions that I described would be in violation of the county general special use standards in at least the following paragraphs, 4, 5, and 8. I can go through those if you like. You probably know that in any case. I requested the conditions I described be established because the environmental risk is too great. Even small amounts of fertilizer containing phosphorus and other chemicals conducive to the growth of harmful algae blooms introduced by the runoff into the lake could render it unusable for swimming and other types of recreation. Experience has shown that even very large bodies of water are not exempt from the virulent algae blooms stemming from agricultural nutrients, turning them into masses of green, smelly ooze. Take the Chesapeake Bay for example. I call your attention to the answers that S-Power gave during the SCC hearings regarding the use of any phosphorus, toxic, geotoxic, and other chemicals during construction or the operation of the facility. Their response was that they, quote, "will not utilize any of the listed chemicals or Their response was that they, quote, "will not utilize any of the listed chemicals or methods during construction and operation," end quote. In this instance, the planning commission and board of supervisors must hold S-Power to its word. I request that you include these conditions that I've described to bar the use of fertilizers with any form of phosphorus and other toxic chemicals that present potential harm to the environment. Thank you for your consideration.
Sarah Meadows, Jim Meadows, John Vagnetti.
Sarah Meadows, Chancellor District. I've read many articles, letters to the editor, and attended many public hearings regarding the S-Power special use permit application. I initially heard concerned citizens of Fawn Lake say that they were not against solar power, they just wanted to ensure that it was done properly. I appreciated that because I, too, wanted to make sure controls, regulations, and specifications were spelled out and agreed upon by both the county and S-Power to ensure a good result of this project. Solar power and other forms of renewable energy have been mandated by both our state and federal governments. So what is the problem with this project that has been proposed here in Spotsylvania County? Plain and simple, it is a "not in my backyard" attitude that has caused an uprising from a small group of people that certainly does not represent the majority feeling of the Spotsylvania County residents. Rather than serving to ensure that this project is done right, the objective of the concerned citizens of Fawn Lake has morphed into block this project at all costs. They have propagated lies and harassed voters at the voting booth. I applaud S-Power for continuing to listen to the concerns that have been voiced and addressing them in ways that will protect both the project and Spotsylvania County, as well as improve the quality of life for even those people who have been most adamantly opposed to the project. The win-at-any-cost mindset of those most vocal has blinded them to any of the compromises, concessions, and offers that S-Power has put on the table to make the project more appealing. Unfortunately, this has become the norm in our society and throughout our political structure. Opinions and attitudes have been adopted as truth and fact, creating no room for compromise or acceptance of opposing opinions and attitudes. In most cases, truth lies somewhere in the middle ground, and it is time that truth be sought rather than support for my opinion. We understand that some of our neighbors would rather look into an adjacent woodland rather than property that has been timbered. The reality of this project is that the sooner approval is given to S-Power to develop the solar farm, the sooner buffer plantings and screening vegetation can be established to restore the beauty and privacy that existed prior to the timbering. With the county objective of attracting future commercial and industrial companies to Spotsylvania, I believe you'd be shooting yourselves in the foot if you reject the SUP for S-Power. When potential companies see that something as beneficial to the environment as a solar farm is railroaded out of the county, they will decide to establish and grow their businesses elsewhere. On the other hand, I think that the existence of the largest solar farm in the east will be a tremendous asset to encourage other businesses to come to our county. We are proud to be part of this project and ask that you approve the special use permit for S-Power.
Thank you.
Jim Meadows, John Vagnetti, James Ballslaw.
Hello. I am Jim Meadows. I live in the Livingston District. My father owns 60 acres adjacent to the proposed solar site, and I own over 80 acres adjacent to him. We are in favor of having the solar panels approved. For me, it's about, I've been, I was basically raised there, and for me, it's about my neighbors. I like the idea of having solar panels as my neighbor. Solar panels don't drive down the road. Solar panels aren't sitting in the classroom. Solar panels aren't making noise. Solar panels aren't shooting guns. Solar panels are good for the environment. So I just think that the people that are against this don't understand, I would much rather look out across my fields and look into the backwoods and see solar panels than I would apartments, or townhouses, or houses, or buildings, or schools, and roads, and all the things, and all the things that go with maintaining that is expensive. So for me, I'd much prefer looking at the solar panels and having them as neighbors. I think they'd be a good neighbor. We are adjacent landowners. It's good for us. It's good for Spotsylvania County. It's good for the state. It's good for our environment, so, thank you.
John Vagnetti, James Ballslaw, and Jackie Williams.
My name is John Vagnetti. I live in the Livingston District, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my grandchildren. I've looked at the material provided by both S-Power and the concerned citizens, done some independent research on my own. I'm not a scientist, but as a citizen, I've come to this conclusion. The proposed industrial solar plant is the wrong technology on the wrong scale in the wrong location. If approved, what S-Power is planning would adversely affect the environment, economy, and quality of life in this region on a scale not seen since the Civil War. The aftermath would have to be dealt with for most of the 21st century. We live in and care passionately about Spotsylvania County. It's past, it's present, and future. S-Power does not. I respectfully urge that this permit be denied. Thank you.
James Ballslaw, Jackie Williams, Smokey Green.
My name is James Ballslaw, and I'm in the Livingston District. When I first found out about this, I really did not know much about it. It was through the help of my wife and doing more research that I really learned how much I didn't know about this. But today, what I want to say is, there's many concerns that have been brought to you already. They've been brought to you much more eloquently than I could bring to you. So I just want to change some of my talking points and just focus on a few things that I wasn't expecting to talk about going into today. First off, the increased traffic on the roads. I forget the number that was put up there, but it was much more than I was expecting. That kind of took me back a little bit, and, you know, I'm from Michigan where the roads are nice and straight, but taking my kids to school every day out here in Spotsylvania, they're anything but straight. And a couple of months ago in the spring, we did see a truck that was carrying some logs that did fall over, and it created a pileup of cars, completely rerouted us to go into the school. I can't imagine what it would look like to have this go through and have maybe 560 truckloads of this going through a day. I think we have much bigger concerns than just going to the store to get our toilet paper. It's going to be a big problem. I also want to say that we also had a few months ago, a duray show come through our neighborhood. There were trees all over the place, and it left behind a huge mess. So what does that mean when something like that comes through, 3,000 acres of solar panels? What's going to happen? What plan is in effect for when that does happen again? And last but not least, I do want to speak to you on behalf of being a Realtor. As my fellow Realtor Kathleen shared earlier, this will not help the value of homes. And with all due respect to the lady who spoke before, there are not many buyers that are looking to move to a neighborhood where you are that close to a solar panel farm. This is something that is not sought for, it's not sought after, and I can tell you from experience as one of the top Realtors in the area, that when there are things like this that close to residential neighborhoods, it does not help home values. It actually, it impacts them negatively, as like I said, my fellow Realtor Kathleen shared previously. So I do ask that you take these things into consideration. I also want to close out by saying that I've made it very clear from the get-go that I did not want this to go forward, that I was in opposition of it, but that if it did go forward, that there would be certain things put in place to protect us. And I think that that's been misconstrued along the way, that we were no harm and that we switched all of a sudden from no harm to something else. No. Many of us made it clear that we did not want this, but that if it did move forward, we want things in place to make it more restrictive. So thank you for your consideration.
Jackie Williams and Smokey Green.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jackie Williams. I live in the Berkeley District, and I'm speaking for myself. I have several concerns pertaining to the financial aspects of the solar farm proposal. First one, the financing of the projects through LLC leaves serious doubt as to who will be left holding the bag in the event of a bankruptcy declared by one or more of the parties. Number two, the discussion of the exemptions missed the fact again that the county provides an additional exemption to utilities. This means the 80% is incorrect. It would be greater than that percentage if the county follows previous practice. Number three, the fact that the Commonwealth of Virginia, SCC, will make the assessment, not the county, will likely result in a modest valuation for equipment. It would never be 552 million, since that number includes costs that are not assessable for tax purposes. Number four, the rest of the financial analysis is erroneous due to the above issues on non-taxable elements. The composite index would be affected based on whatever additional tax is generated. Therefore, the county would have to provide additional funding for schools to make up for the reduction caused by the composite index change. Number five, the one-time rollback tax equalling 471,000 is subject to waiver by the county and therefore questionable. And my last point, number six, the cost share for water utility improvement is reasonably laid out, however, the total given of 3.1 million, as S-Power's cost seems low and also unlikely to be received in advance of actual expense. I thank you.
I'm Smokey Green, resident of Fawn Lake. Appreciate the opportunity to address the commission with my concerns. Been a resident there at Fawn Lake for 10 years, and God willing, I'll be there another 10 years. My wife and I often reflect, in our 30-some years of living in Virginia, of how blessed we are in Virginia, when we see the devastation across the rest of the country from some of the natural disasters that we've seen, the terrible fires in California, for example. Our hearts go out to our fellow Americans who have lost everything to nature's disasters. So it's ironic that here, we're faced with a threat to our idyllic way of life, really, at Fawn Lake, not by Mother Nature, but by human business activity. The proposed S-Power project, you know well how large it is, and the fact that it is right on the border of our Fawn Lake community. And the idea that the boundary should be 350 feet from this industrial area is really very inadequate. It's hard to argue ultimately against clean solar energy, but I think what we're arguing against is this enormous and unprecedented construction project right on our boundary. Unknown impacts on the weather, the vegetation, and the fragile North Virginia environment. So we're concerned. We're concerned for our fishing lake. We're concerned for our golf course. We're concerned for our drinking water. And we've heard here a lot of promises, a lot of research, that says, "No problem." The trouble is, you can't really know that for sure. This is an unprecedented undertaking. And at the end of the day, the people at Fawn Lake and in the surrounding community are going to pay the price for any ecological disaster. So ultimately, we hope that this project will not go through, but if it does, we urge that it be scaled back to reduce the risks of unknown impacts on the environment. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. At this point in the agenda, we're about halfway through. I want to give everybody about five, six minutes here to stress, so we'll take, we'll go into recess, and I'll bring everybody back at 10:10. go into recess and I'll bring everybody back at 10:10.
Ready?
We are ready.
Dr. Yvonne Anthansal, Danny Pemberson, and Stephen Dos.
Good evening. Again, my name is Dr. Yvonne Anthanasal and I live in the Livingston District and I am speaking on behalf of myself. But before I get started, I would just like to note and have it entered into the record that Mr. Wilson, who spoke in favor of this project earlier, is an employee of NTS, a company that has a financial interest in the S-Power project. He failed to mention this relationship during his presentation. The citizens of this county understand that the Planning Commission has a challenge in absorbing all the issues and concerns associated with this mammoth solar facility. There are so many moving parts to this project of this size. As our commission, can you answer these questions and concerns? Fully understand the entity S-Power, which started in 2012 and describes itself, and they describe themselves, a developing renewable energy independent company. How the water tables would be impacted, how the land will be impacted during the solar facility operations and after the panels are removed. How the values of homes will be impacted, which would cause a decrease in property taxes. Traffic during construction. All the while, school buses would share the roads of workers and 18-wheeler trucks. How the new environment will impact the wildlife and bird migration. S-Power has yet to be able to say how the bird migration, and I asked that a long time ago, because we have a lot of different birds that come through. We have no idea if we'll ever get to see those birds again. How Spotsylvania's reputation as a historical tourist center would be replaced as the county with the largest solar facility on the East Coast. Is that what we want to be known for? And that's what will happen. How will berms be maintained? We all know that vegetation dies. How is that going to be maintained? Once, all I've been hearing all night is how it's going to go in, but it's going to die. Over these years, who's going to maintain it? Is the county going to be responsible for keeping these berms up? Or are you going to have S-Power do it? And if S-Power's not around, then who's going to do it? This list, of course, is not inclusive. If you cannot answer the above issues, answer the, above the issues and others, then it is incumbent upon yourselves to not let this happen. With this said, the Planning Commission represents its citizens and you can see from this turnout that we do not want our beautiful countryside to be forever changed and not for the good. Please, if you're going to move forward with this project, please, please, you have...
Mr. Pemberton is representing a group. Stephen Dos, John Goodrich.
Thank you. My name is Danny Pemberton. I'm speaking for a group tonight. My name is Daniel Pemberton.
Would you mind standing in the group?
Spotsylvania County Landowners Association Incorporated.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Pemberton. I live at 6206 Plank Road. Tonight, I'm representing the Spotsylvania County Landowners Association Incorporated. We have 115 members at the present time that own property all over the county. And for what I'm hearing tonight, we must be the solid majority because we have property in all of the districts. We have members that have projects, property in all the districts. One of the objectives of the landowners is to stand up for property rights. This is definitely a property right issue. Landowners should have the right to sell, rent, lease, or do as they like with property as long as it does not cause harm to others. This project definitely fits that description. I have been to four meetings that the S-Power representatives was there describing their project. It seems that S-Power has adjusted and modified their project so it will not harm or affect Spotsylvania County residents. Everyone understands that a project like this in construction will be disturbance and things go on that are probably not well taken. But tonight, as I listen, I can't believe that some of these people that are complaining tonight weren't here when Fawn Lake was built. For example, most of the people that live in Fawn Lake were not here when the residential community was built. I was working in and around Fawn Lake in the early 90s. When the construction was underway, there was mud, there was mud, there was mud, and there was more mud. The people who lived in the area were not happy. They complained. The local people complained. The National Park Service complained. But you see what we have. Now we have a beautiful community. It was well thought out and it looks really nice now, thankfully. S-Power's project, S-Power's project will be the same way, but in the end, it would be a great, beautiful place for Spotsylvania County. Remember, they said the same thing about the racetrack at Thornsburg. Now look at it. It's up and running. It looks good. They said that the property tax would go down around the racetrack. Property tax did not go down. The racetrack has drawn in more commercial property. It also has, the taxes have stayed steady or maybe gone up. Everyone should be in favor of a renewable energy, especially just look at the amount of CO2 that will be saved with solar versus coal or oil with, from delivering 500 megawatts of electricity. Some of the assets to our county are the $600,000 a year of property tax for each year for the next 35 years. S-Power will install solar systems on the county buildings and will deliver 10 megawatts of power, 10 megawatts of power, that save Spotsylvania County $35 million over 35 years. The $1.5 million that S-Power is going to put up to help upgrade, now they're going to be upgrading the water line that's needed at Fawn Lake. They're not upgrading because they need it. They have other ways of getting water. It may not be acceptable, but they are upgrading it to help the pressure at Fawn Lake for helping the county by $3.5 million. Also, they'll be, they're doing road projects in the county and especially on old, Orange Plank Road and possibly Roundabout. These 600 acres will be detected from development in homes, being developed in homes. It will employ 700 people during construction and approximately 25 people during, after construction period. At our last meeting of the Spotsylvania County Owners Meeting, which was October 18th, our membership voted to support S-Power's project in Spotsylvania. We feel, we feel this will be an all-around good project for Spotsylvania County in the long run. We please, we...
Mr. Dos, Stephen Dos, John Goodrich, followed by Barbara Koolig and Catherine Lavello.
John Goodrich, Livingston District. I'm speaking for myself. My concern is to respectfully remind the members of the Planning Commission as well
You speak into the microphone, please. Is it on?
Try speaking again. Again.
One last time. John Goodrich, Livingston District, speaking for myself. My concern is to respectfully remind the members of the Planning Commission as well as those who live in the project area of what they should expect if this solar energy center is approved. You will forgive me. Given my age, I'm more interested in surviving the two-year construction period than I am worried about the problems of decommissioning. Should this plan... Should this plan pass, the construction of the solar factory will last 18 to 24 months. During these two years, construction will continue seven days a week, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday. There will be up to 15 pile drivers. Some of these produce at source noise levels of 114 decibels. According to the American Journal of Public Health, 85 decibels is not a safe noise exposure for the public. Higher noise levels may contribute to hypertension, diabetes, and obesity. We are to be subjected to 114, not 85. According to Kim Lee Horn's traffic report, during the 18 months of construction, there will be an additional 800 extra car round trips on our roads each day, carrying S-Power employees to and fro work. An additional 70 delivery truck round trips each day, including approximately 35 heavy haul truck round trips daily. If we only consider the heavy haul trucks, that works out to 19,000 heavy haul round trips during the estimated duration of the construction. Our roads, our community, our residents are not built to withstand that stress. The assurance of S-Power is not convincing. The scope and scale of this project is overwhelming. It needs to be designed. Thank you.
Barbara Kulig. Darrell Dupont. James Morris. Barbara Kulig. She left. Darrell Dupont. James Morris.
For computer, please.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, for your time. My name is James Morris. I live at 10,001 Old Travelers Road off of West Catharpan. I'm not one of those that other people have deemed an elitist from Fawn Lake, because this project is not just about Fawn Lake. It's about Spotsylvania County. The map that was just put up there where Site 8 is, if you look in the bottom, right in the center, there's that little white area. That's where my basically entire family lives. I'm going to go ahead and read this real quick. You can see on the map, that's what my big concern is. I'm right smack dab in the middle of it. My wife and I built our dream home there in 2007, and we are truly living the American dream. The old saying, as we just heard recently, "Not in my backyard," really does apply here. But we knew that eventually, something, someone, was going to build there. It's timber property. And we understand that progress is going to happen. Progress does happen every single day. That's the only way Spotsylvania is going to survive. But the progress we need is logical and especially safe for the future of our residents of this county. If you step back for a moment and look at the project to see what has to be done and how they want it done, it looks very clear to me and a lot of other people here that we are getting the short end of the stick. Okay? I don't know of anyone anywhere who gets half-off deals when they need their infrastructure for utilities to be done. When I built my house, Spotsylvania certainly didn't come to me and say, "Hey, thank you for building in Spotsylvania. We're going to put in your wealth for you for free," because that's kind of like a half-off deal. We all pay our way. A business here, if you want to be in Spotsylvania and benefit and be a good neighbor, then take care of your business. Show us that you can do the job that's required of you. Okay? The possible impact on the environment. In a perfect world, those panels are probably going to be 100% safe. But we all know, over the recent couple of years, we don't live in a perfect world. A quick picture from Puerto Rico of a solar panel factory, plant, farm, it's devastated. That is a great possibility in Spotsylvania County, because we're not immune to hurricanes. We're not immune to tornadoes. I thank you for your time.
Is Darrell Dupont here? That's you? Okay. Mr. Dupont, followed by Richard Schwartzman and Sarah Barker.
My name is Darrell Dupont, and I reside in Fawn Lake. This is working, apparently? Can't tell from up here. Okay. I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I'm not an accountant. I'm not a scientist. There's a lot of folks behind me that are just brilliant at all of that stuff. I haven't even been a resident in this area that long, less than, you know, two years. And my wife and I moved here essentially because, my wife says I can't tell the time in three minutes, so I'm going to, I'm going to go as quickly as I can. We were on a shuttle bus going to Reagan from a hotel, looking for a place to live down here, and somebody in Fawn Lake said, "Oh, you got to move to Fawn Lake. The people in the area, it's wonderful, it's great, it's terrific." And it really is. And I have been watching all of you tonight, if you don't mind me saying. And I watch a lot of C-SPAN, and I see some snoozing and some game-playing and craziness. I have never seen such an attentive group of people tonight as I have with you. Each and every one of you has listened to every word everyone has said, and I can't tell you how incredible that is. That's really, I mean, I don't know any of you. I hope to meet you soon, but man, that's, you're really focused in on what we've got to say. I do get to vote, and the thrust of what I wanted to say was, I moved here, my wife and I retired, I've worked, she's worked, you know, 70, 80 hours a week, and we have investment in this community. And you have a wicked job. You've got legal things and accountant things and scientific things, and my heads are going to explode. I can't imagine how you're going to make a decision. But from me to you, please think about my investment in this community and moving here from Boston. And it's in your hands, you know? So I think you know what I'm saying? Protect me as we hire you and vote for you and what, you know? Watch my back, if you would, please, because I have an investment here that could vanish if handled improperly. I'm a capitalist. I've worked in business. NIMBY used to be this sort of broad, general thing, like, "Don't put a wind generator up on that mountain over there, not in my backyard." This is literally in people's backyards. I mean, this isn't like an expression. This is in their backyard. And we're talking 50-foot buffers and things of that nature. So all I'm asking for you to do is watch out for me, and I, and I thank you. I've got a lot of my net worth invested in this, in this community now. So thank you very much. Back to you.
Richard Schwartzman. Sarah Barker. Jamie Jenkins.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to also say I appreciate how difficult your job is. Thank you for doing it. My name is Richard Schwartzman, and I live in the Livingston District. Here are my impressions in three bullet points. Except for those that are profiting directly from contracts with S-Power, inform folks across the county, do not want the industrial solar plant as their neighbor. If the county supervisors decide to approve this project, they will literally be signing a death warrant to 10 square miles of rural woodlands, farmlands, wetlands, and homes in the vicinity of the solar plant. An action that cannot benefit their constituents and neighbors and cannot be undone, certainly not in our lifetime. Finally, a massive solar plant in rural western Spotsylvania is simply incongruent with the Spotsilvanian lifestyle and our history. I ask why we would ever consider an out-of-state corporation's intent to industrialize our rural lands. What I've read and heard again tonight is that it's all about the money that the county has promised from S-Power, such as tax payments over the life of the project, solar panels on public buildings installed for free, a new fire station. Really? And then there are these, alignment with the Commonwealth's renewable energy programs. And finally, there's an easy plug-in to the Dominion Power electrical grid. Aren't we lucky for that? That said, I have three simple questions that are a litmus test for this project, and since most of the people of Spotsylvania can't speak to this tonight, I'll answer for them. How does this improve the lives of your neighbors? Cheaper electricity? No. It's already sold to big business. No one in Spotsylvania will benefit from a single kilowatt. Lots of new enduring jobs? No. There are literally a handful of jobs. The number is used as 25 to 30 tonight. I venture to guess it will be fewer jobs than are currently employed at the Giant on Plank Road. Lower taxes? No, of course not. How much money is enough for the county to endorse the sale and repurposing of rural lands by big business? Your constituents will say no amount of money is worth that. Finally, who owns the vision for Spotsylvania? And accordingly, who is making decisions to stay true to that vision? The county supervisors? The state of Virginia? Or S-Power? Well, I've attended many public hearings and a town hall on this project, and sadly, and I mean no disrespect, my impression is that the county supervisors are overworked, poorly informed on the solar project.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartzman. Thank you. Time's up. Appreciate it.
Sarah Barker. Jamie Jenkins. David Garofalo. I'm sorry, Sarah Barker. Jamie Jenkins. Followed by Stephanie Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Dave Garofalo. I've lived in Spotsylvania County the last 20 years, and I've had a unique perspective because I'm a mortgage lender. And I called our head underwriter today, and I, and I told him that I live 350 feet away from an industrial electrical generating plant. Would that be a problem getting a mortgage loan? She said, "Sure, it's going to be a problem. There's a huge problem. We have to study the economic impact. We have to do an environmental study before a lender is going to lend on a piece of property that is abutting, something like that." So she, that cost will get passed on to the seller and the buyer. And as I sat back, and I thought, you know, I've been here 20 years. I just, I just worked through the 1980, the mid-2000s meltdown. I sold my house, and I took a huge financial hit. But we're looking at that again at a very small scale in Fawn Lake. I mean, it's small in that it's not national, but all us people that live on the berm, we're looking at catastrophic property losses. There's going to be people walking away from these homes when you can't, when, how could you ask a person to invest everything they've ever worked for on a piece of property abutting up against a power plant that uses toxic chemicals as a source for generating electricity? The way I envision this happening is people will vote with their feet, and supply and demand always rules. If there's no demand for these houses, the houses can't be sold. If the houses can't be sold, they will be discounted. Does that sound familiar to the mid-2000s, when everybody turned their keys in and walked away? That's my fear, is I've worked, everything I've ever worked for is invested into this house. And how could anybody else walk into this situation with the uncertainty and plop their life savings into a property that made value has an uncertainty? We don't know. These, these, you know, these panels could be the greatest thing of all time, but we sit, we work with natural disasters all the time. What comes to mind was Japan. Remember the earthquake in Japan where the, the power plant, nuclear power plant was swamped by a tidal wave? Well, we have earthquakes. We have natural disasters. And I imagine the people in Japan had a hearing much like this, and they said, "What could possibly go wrong? We're going to put a nuclear power plant right here." And you saw what happened to that. If there's that type of catastrophic, you know, leakage of these toxic chemicals, there will not be a loan done in this, in this subdivision. If you can't get a loan, you can't sell your property, and your property has no value. So that's where I'm sitting right now. I'm looking at this, at worst case, what happens? Because we don't know what is going to happen. But one thing for sure, if something negative happens, property values will plummet. And if you practice dynamic tax analysis instead of static tax analysis, you might look at things a little bit differently.
Thank you.
Okay.
Stephanie Taylor. Is Stephanie Taylor here? John Pickens, maybe? John? Alan Branman?
Close enough.
I put my glasses on.
My name is Alan Branman. I live at Fawn Lake. I'm an elitist because I earned it.[1588.01][1588.01](laughter) Unfortunately, recent events have given pause for concern about the fact that this might be a rigged game. I think we're getting some smoke blown at us. An NTS vice president has been telling Fawn Lake residents that the solar deal has already been made. I won't mention Helen's name, but now, otherwise, you couldn't fill this place if she, if people took it, didn't take it seriously. Meanwhile, the S-Power supervisor, who's been playing Mr. Rogers, our future neighbor, has suddenly, with the same breath, called us liars in a public forum when all we wanted to do was get some answers from our future good neighbor. And speaking of lies, this recent mailer from S-Power is full of them. Went to all of the homes in Spotsylvania. The project aligns, the project aligns with the county's comprehensive plan? When did that happen? That's what it says on here. But the most egregious deception is the $9.8 million in tax revenue, quote, "over the life of the project." Well, it leads Spotsilvanians to believe that after the thing is finally built, they're going to get a windfall instead of a 40-year string on this. In reality, it's a $600,000 a year in taxes without a kicker for inflation. The $600,000 will be devalued to $200,000 by year 40, if they ever make it to that point. Solyndra didn't. And oh, yes, they're throwing in a park, God knows where, where we have to pay taxes for, and we, and they, we have to, they're going to put some solar panels on some of our buildings that will distort the integrity of the architecture. That doesn't make any sense to me either. So it would be most assuring if the supervisors, not you folks necessarily, would reassure us that nothing has been agreed to yet, and there's no Spotsylvania solar swindle in the, in the making. And I, I want to tell you lastly that, since I have a little bit of time here, just to sum up.
Thank you very much.
I hope you look at this thing.
I believe it's Fabiano. Richard? Okay. Jim McLeod. Jason Williams is after Jim McLeod.
All right.
Yep, you're next.
Planning Commission members, my name is Jim McLeod. I live in the Chancellor District. I want to thank the county staff for all the work that they've done in presenting some... I want to thank the county staff for all the work that they've done in presenting some of the information this evening. I want to say that this is a solar panel, a PV panel, right here. It can take light from a star 93 million miles away and make electricity, make energy. It can do it without making noise, without putting off odors. It can do it without moving parts. This is safe. The solar panel has a life of 35 to 50 years. After that, it drops down to 80% proficiency, maybe a little less, but it still can produce. I've got some panels that are over 50 years old and they produce 80% of what they were made for. The solar panel will give Dominion Power diversification in its sources of energy. At Four Mile Fork, at Dominion Power's office, they have a series of solar panels. They're adding energy to their office setup. Louisa's doing this. In fact, in the United States, in the last 50 years, there has been growth in solar power to where now there's over a million generation plants in the country. In North Carolina, a leading state in the East, they're using goats and sheep to mow the panel areas. I do want to say that the energy goes into the grid. Everybody gets to use this. Dominion Power has to meet the needs of a growing state. And this is one way. Microsoft and Apple have kicked in money into a system that has been proven. If it's so deadly, why has it grown so much? Why has so many cities, counties, countries used this and still use it? In California, a place known to tell you that a candy wrapper is carcinogenic, they look at this stuff. They've had it for over 50 years in places. The Carizo Plains, no problem. It was decommissioned. They put a new one in its place. More efficient panels. The efficiency of these panels has gone from 10%, 20 years ago, to now 21% or better. It's a safe system. I do recommend that the panel tonight, the Planning Commission, take in consideration some of the things that people have said, the problems of burning and et cetera. But I think they can be mitigated to where they would be safe. And I think that this is a good choice for the county. Thank you.
Jason Williams, followed by Rusty Foley.
Good evening. And thank you for letting me have this time to talk to you. My name is Jason Williams. I live in the Berkeley District. Literally a walk from this building right here. My children have grown up in this neighborhood, have gone to the schools in this community. And I support this solar project. In addition to being a resident of Spotsylvania County, I am a conservative, but I'm also a capitalist. My wife and I have a small business. This project will have a direct impact on our business. We will have growth throughout our county. We already support a lot of projects up in Northern Virginia. My team goes to Loudoun County, Fairfax County to support various data centers and other projects in Northern Virginia. One of the largest data centers in the world is being constructed right now in Loudoun County. And the power required for that facility is enormous. Microsoft recognizes that they need power. And this power is going to come from this project, a lot of it. Now, we need to recognize that this county is a stone's throw from Northern Virginia and DC. Whether we like it or not, that is a huge hub for technology infrastructure. A lot of money is being dumped into technology infrastructure and into our communities. And we need to be able to accommodate for that. This project does that. Now, again, this isn't a Democrat or Republican issue. This isn't a liberal or conservative issue. This is an American issue. Fossil fuels are limited in supply. If we don't invest in infrastructure in the future for alternative sources of energy, again, I'm a conservative, not an environmentalist, I'm a realist. This infrastructure is part of our future. If we don't perfect it now, where are we going to be 20, 30, 50 years from now? So in summation, I support this project. I hope you all do too. This is good for our community and good for our local small businesses.
Rusty Foley, followed by Justin Shields.
Good evening. My name's Rusty Foley. I'm a resident of Henrico County. I'm a real estate broker. And in, in all honesty, I represent the River Oak Timberland Investments. I worked with the consultant, introduced the project to S-Power back in 2016. I think the Planning Commission and the planning offices deserve a huge bit of gratification. You've done a ton of work and your work should be very much admired. It's, you got, you've crossed every T, dotted every I, and you deserve a lot of credit. As you probably know, the state passed legislation, Senate Bill 966, saying that 5,000 megawatts of renewable power was in the public interest and needed to be put into the grid prior to January 1, 2024. It also goes on to say that 25% of any new solar generation in the public interest must be purchased from non-utility companies through power purchase agreements, like Microsoft has done here. I think approving the conditional use permit, S-Power could offer some of the greatest free advertising for Spotsylvania County's economic development. I think whenever businesses or solar power is going to be in the news, Spotsylvania County will be mentioned. And I think it could be a great benefit to the county as far as bringing more business to this area. And it appears that S-Power has done and will do all kinds of things for the county, talking about solar panels on buildings, schools, providing half the cost as far as bringing new water line. I just think, I just think it is a wonderful project. I think that during construction, you know, is there going to be noise? Absolutely. Is there going to be more traffic during construction? Absolutely. But I think if you look at the whole of the project, after all that's done, it's going to be a quiet neighbor. Renewable energy, green energy, it's just very, very good for the county. I urge you to approve. Thanks.
Thank you.
Justin Shields. Is Justin Shields here? Al Palmer. Al Palmer, followed by Dale Simmons.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the commission staff for your time and effort in reviewing this application and listening to our comments. I submitted written comments which are cross-reference to your approval criteria. In addition to being a resident of Spotsylvania County, I am a licensed civil engineer in the state with 30 years of experience in land development projects. I'd like to just highlight four items quickly from my comments. With regard to criteria one, water quality, I would request that the commission consider having Duberry conduct a peer review of the stormwater plan that was submitted, the, in particular, with respect to the method in which the water quality computations were conducted. As presented, they are only considering the posts for the panels as being impervious cover and not considering the respective panels. That could change the impervious cover from 60 acres to 1,000 acres, which would have a significant downstream impact. With respect to criteria three in public welfare, if you recommend approval of the SUP, I would recommend that you consider, with respect to the decommissioning, that a cash escrow be required for the cost rather than a bond. What experience does the county have in calling a bond for, in 35 years? A cash escrow based on current value would ensure that the funds are available if necessary in the future. With respect to criteria seven in traffic congestion, I was unable to find anywhere in the packet an analysis of the intersection of Orange Plank Road and Brock Road. The applicant indicates that 40% of the construction traffic will utilize Orange Plank Road, presumably going through the Brock Road intersection. Using that intersection on a daily basis, I don't believe it operates at an acceptable level of service and the construction traffic would just exacerbate that issue. The applicant should be required to evaluate that intersection. And I would request that you have Duberry conduct a peer review of that evaluation. As you have heard tonight, there are many unanswered questions. I would request that you please keep the public record open until the applicant has submitted all of their responses to the planning staff requests, as well as those from the public, so that we have an opportunity to review and comment on that material while the public record is open. Thank you very much.
Dale Simmons, followed by Stephen Kerr.
Hi. Good night, Dale Simmons. Just a little profile on myself, not that it's important, but I grew up in Jamaica. I just went back to Jamaica. Unfortunately, my father passed and we buried him. Unfortunately, you know, I still have family member in Jamaica that don't even have electricity or running water. In 2018, I am one of six siblings that live now in Spotsylvania for the past 18 years. I live in Spotsylvania, so I'm not, I am probably the first generation in my family to graduate from college. So I'm not sure whether to applaud, get some applause for being called an elitist now, or whether, whether that's a compliment or, you know, or whether to laugh about it. I just want to say that some of the concern of some of the residents in Fawn Lake, first and foremost, as adults, our biggest concern is for our self or our family, ultimately the community. And I don't want those concerns get dismissed because of where we are. I think these concerns are legitimate, okay? A big concern about this project, unfortunately, is the proximity to where we are. Some of us are very pro renewable energy, but I think would have the same concern whether this was a power plant, whether this was 2 million wind, you know, wind turbines. A lot of this, our homes are our biggest investments, okay? Our homes are probably the most investments to us. So I don't want it to be dismissed that we have a concern about this and it's not legitimate. The folks that are, some of the families that are pro for this project, they have legitimate reasons too. If you own 200 or 400 acres and it's been in your family for, since the 70s, you know, of course, there's an economic reason why, you know, you may be pro for this project. So again, the proximity of this project is of big concern. We all have kids. I'm concerned about the safety of this project. In my profession, you know, we go by the edict of first do no harm. And we don't know the extent of what the harm related to this ultimately is. It's just not enough information. We know that cadmium in itself is pretty toxic. We know that telluride in itself is pretty toxic. We know that together, the toxicity is greatly diminished, but we know it's not zero. And even if it's just a small amount, a small amount at the multiple of this project is still potentially an issue. And we just don't know all of this information. We're just not armed with all of this information.
Thank you.
Stephen Kerr, followed by Jerry Bradshaw.
My name is Stephen Kerr. I live in the Livingston District, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My question on this application is, is it, you know, is it really a viable application? There was a meeting at Fawn Lake with the Livingston District Supervisor a number of months ago. And one of the questions I submitted was, is, you know, what, will this project really work? And the answer to the question at that time was, I'll have the staff look into it. Well, in the staff review, I don't really see any analysis of, you know, the power generation on this or whether this thing's actually going to work. If you go on the U.S. Department of Energy website, there's a section in there studied by, by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, and they prepared a series of maps called the U.S. State Solar Resource Maps. And these maps show what the solar power generation feasibility is in each state. So if you click on Virginia and look at the Virginia maps, you'll find that Virginia ranks almost at the bottom of the solar potential based on the study. Only northeast U.S. is worse. And being a former native of Syracuse, New York, I can tell you that is true. But, you know, so the question is, why would you want to put it in Virginia when we're near the lower part of the range and almost the bottom of the range? Looking at NOAA weather data, and if you, there's a website you can go on and you can check percentage of sunshine for various cities in the country. Now, obviously, Spotsylvania's not going to show up in there, but Richmond does. It's not too far away. Based on the NOAA compilation of data, 63% sunshine for Richmond during the year. Is that enough to run this thing? I don't know. If you look at the cloudiness, mean number of days, Richmond comes in at 100 clear days, 106 partly cloudy days, 160 cloudy days. Compare that to Phoenix, 211 clear days, 85 partly cloudy days, and only 70 cloudy days. So the question is, has anybody really looked at that to see if this thing's going to work or not? I don't know the answer. I don't know if you know the answer, but my recommendation is you take a real hard look at this before you make a decision, because once you've made your decision, you got to live with it. And if this thing's a loser, you're going to be living with it for a long time. So thank you for the opportunity again to speak. Appreciate it.
Jerry Bradshaw, followed by Jennifer Mikowski.
Hello, Jerry Bradshaw. I have been a Spotsylvania County resident for 25 years, and I've lived in Fawn Lake a year and a half. I'm still trying to figure out how I pulled that off. It's a nice place. I, I support solar energy. I support wind energy. My opinion is they'll be around long after all the oil and the coal and maybe even mankind have left this planet, they still have wind and solar. So they're a good thing and we need to harness them. Now, when I heard that 1.8 million panels were going in across the lake from me in Fawn Lake, I thought I needed to do a little research. So a couple of mouse clicks and I was on a website, SEIA.org. That is the Solar Energy Industries Association's website, SEIA.org. Their slogan is, "Building a Strong Solar Industry to Power America Since 1974." So my opinion is if they don't know what they're talking about, nobody does. Well, they had a map of the United States, maybe it's the same one the other gentleman had, where you clicked on each state and it gave you the information. Virginia generates 635, 635... Virginia generates six hundred and thirty-five, six hundred and thirty-five megawatts of solar power, the entire state of Virginia. S-Power's talking about almost doubling that with one project, almost doubling it. Now, to get those six hundred and thirty-five megawatts in the entire state of Virginia, there are four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven installs. By raising that four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven to eighty-eight, we're almost doubling the solar power in the state of Virginia. That sounds like trouble to me. The entire state of Virginia in the solar industry has three thousand five hundred and sixty-five jobs, three thousand five hundred and sixty-five. They're talking tonight that by almost doubling the generated power in the entire state, Spotsylvania's gonna get twenty-five whole jobs, and there's thirty-five hundred and sixty-five producing six hundred and thirty-five megawatts statewide. Just doesn't add up to me. I'm from South Florida, the Sunshine State, so I clicked on it. The Sunshine State generates nineteen hundred-
Thank you very much.
Nineteen forty-two for Florida, nineteen forty-two.
Time's up.
This is one-fourth of the-
Jennifer Mikowski, followed by Ronald Little.
Those are the last two that signed up.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Jennifer Mikowski. I reside in the Chancellorsville District, and I'm the managing partner of Stevenson Ridge, right down the road here. I'm here today to express my support for the S-Power Spotsylvania Solar Energy Center. This is what Spotsylvania needs to move forward towards energy sustainability. If we want to be competitive and attract the types of residents and businesses that value innovation and sustainability, then we need to demonstrate it ourselves. This project will be, bring jobs to the region, the tax revenue that we need, assist with infrastructure improvements, and position us as a leader in the growing industry. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much. Please support this project.
Ronald Little.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. I really wasn't planning on speaking, but I was speaking with my wife earlier tonight, and she said, "You really might want to take a look at what's about to change the landscape of Spotsylvania." I'm a simple man. I was, moved here in nineteen eighty-five. I bought a house when I was twenty-six. I raised a family here. I'm vested in Spotsylvania. I remember the days when Sheriff Wadi, we used to ride through the neighborhood and stop and talk to you. So I've grown in to this neighborhood. My children have grown up, and they have invested in this county. I moved here because this is a beautiful county, and my heart rests here because this is where I live. Yeah, people here tonight have talked about possibly investing and moving here, possibly having another company here. Well, I have a company here, and I'm here in this county, and I am against this product because when you can't even name it properly, some call it a solar farm, it's a solar industrial complex, is what it is, and it will change the landscape of our rural county. A rural county that drew me here, that drew a lot of people here, and who love it, and I don't want to see it changed. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that has signed up.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Yes, sir, come on up.
Okay, my name is Kirk Byers. I live in Livingston District. We've heard a lot of maybes tonight. I'm gonna tell you some facts of history. A company is, is people, S-Power. Who is S-Power? S-Power was Tignor Energy. Who's Tignor Energy? They're the ones that screwed over at Union, New Jersey, had solar panels on the fire departments, libraries, all the other buildings. They got stuck for a big bill, okay? Go back before that. Oregon, university system. The government resigned over this back about five years ago. Redco was a company, Renewable Energy Development Corporation. Who was on Redco? The same people on S-Power. Research Steven Kramer, Sean McBride, their counsel, and also Rob Adams of the property division. You go to San Juan, Utah, a wind farm that they screwed over, calls Bruce Adams, the cousin of Rob Adams, did some unethical things as town commissioner. You follow Steve Kramer again, lawsuit from his last company. Three pension funds sued him for lying. If you're gonna do the special use permit, you better have one hell of a legal escrow set up by them, three to five million dollars, because you're gonna need legal representation to sue these people when they screw you over the way they screw over all of these people. Now, if you want this, I'll give it to you. This is a lot of research I've done. It don't stop, these are just a few of the companies. And look at how they're set up, all the LLCs and everything else, they're gonna screw you over. He goes from where this one subsidy is, he was in coal, he went to nuclear, now he's in solar. Two years from now, when the subsidy's in, he's gone. There's already another company set up there by Steven Ryan Kramer called Lafayette Solar One. So when they bankrupt S-Power, S-Power is just a name. You're dealing with the people. These are the people you're dealing with. I ask you to set up a legal fund, three to five million dollars in escrow account, because you're gonna need legal representation on these people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
It's been a long night, so I'm not gonna say very much, but I do have to say this. I went to Virginia Tech-
Can I get your name?
Oh, Melissa Watson.
Thank you.
I went to Virginia Tech, and that's the first time I've ever been called elite, so I'm happy about it. But I want to also say, I didn't do any research. I wore my red because I live in Fawn Lake. But just sitting here and listening, as you all have done, as we all have done, and participating, I just have to tell you, this does not pass the eye test, it doesn't pass the ear test, and it certainly doesn't pass the smell test. So, that's, if I'm the last person to speak, that's what I want you to hear. And I'm a concerned, uninformed until tonight, but informed citizen now, and I am deeply, deeply worried about where we're going. So I just ask you to really, really think about it, as I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Ball, and I live in the Livingston District, and yes, I live in Fawn Lake. I just wanna thank you all for the time that you've put in here, and that you will continue to put in, because I don't think this is over, and I'm sure you don't think this is over. So, please continue to keep this in the public forum. This is not an issue of class or elitism. It's not an issue of property rights. It's not about funding the retirement of anyone who wants to sell their land. This is an issue of changing the use of land that is been forever classified as agricultural to an industrial complex. And that is what it's really about. And frankly, this whole process for months has felt a lot like Goliath versus David. I doubt a lot of these people could even pronounce Spotsylvania when they decided to come here, or market as a place they would come. But you know what? If they come, if there's any reason that you all think that this still is a viable option, you have been given on September twenty-fifth, a fallback position. Every single one of those things that we have recommended to put into the special use position, permit, it's a fallback position. It's a negotiation. This is a humongous business with a big-time lawyer who says "are" but doesn't live in Fawn Lake. So, I'm just saying, all you have to do, if you really think this is a good idea, and we don't, because we live here, but it's there in writing, everything that needs to be done to make them our good neighbors, we're willing to have good neighbors, but that's our terms for being a good neighbor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Woody Woodyard, Livingston District. I am not elitist. I live in a beautiful community where I think my children can be safe. I do not think that anymore, if this comes to that area. I wanted a place where my children could ride bikes and be safe without the fear of some of the stuff that goes in the outside world. Now we have something bigger and meter than anything that is outside the gates of a beautiful community. I work hard every day to provide for my family to pay for a mortgage, and for the fact that a big power plant can be put in next door to reduce property values that I work to pay that mortgage for, that I will be upended. Just please think about that. Think of a one and a two-and-a-half-year-old child that's gonna be growing up next to a six-thousand-acre solar plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishes to speak this evening on this application? Anybody else? All right, thank you very much. I'll turn it over to the applicant for a five-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the Planning Commission. I appreciate your patience tonight and your diligence in this process. I do a lot of these, as you know, and hear lots of public comments, and been sitting here for a few hours, listening to both pros and cons for this project. I think you, you know me, you know how much we appreciate, or I appreciate, the public being involved. I think that's what this whole process is about. I know you appreciate it. It's, it's difficult at times as applicant's attorney, notwithstanding the fact that some folks don't think I'm from here. My family's been here since seventeen twenty-one. I have a lot of interest in this area, which is why I support this project, and why I'm glad to represent my client in this project, because it provides a lot of opportunities for us. I want us to avoid the name-calling. I want us to avoid misinformation, especially when we know it's not true. And spreading that misinformation in a manner creates fear, the sky is falling. Let's just stick to the facts and science. We want to go through all of these issues that were raised. We don't have enough time to do that. Hopefully, the next meeting, we'll be able to go through questions about the comp plan. If you've been following this project, the comp plan was revised in May to encourage the solar use at this site, and for economic development purposes. It fits the comp plan, folks. We go through the hazards of the materials we're using, we go through our stormwater management planning. You know, the other part that upsets me a bit is people don't understand how much work, not only by the applicant, by the folks in this room, the planning staff, go through to evaluate these projects, to debunk the false statements, to debunk the fears. This county has great staff, professional staff, and even when we go outside to get consultants that debunk wrong information, there's a conspiracy somehow. It's a done deal. There are ninety-six conditions with subconditions, and we, and that's before we get to four new plans in this project. This county and this applicant have heard you loud and clear. This is a very positive project. It's got a unique opportunity for this area. You couldn't have a better team with S-Power, Microsoft, Apple at the table. It's real, folks. Now, the lawyer's gonna shush, because you should hear from the applicant. Garrett Bean is the Vice President of Development with S-Power. I want to ask him to say a few things.
Thank you, Charlie Commissioners. We appreciate the time. We've been working on this project for over two years. We've been working hard with Patrick to address a lot of these issues. S-Power is a developer. We're an owner, and we're an operator. We are your neighbor. We're in the backyard. We're doing that work. We're employing the people and making sure it's operating correctly. I just want to let everyone here know that we are listening to you. We hear you loud and clear. We've been working for a year on this, since we started some of those discussions and those community meetings with you. It's not done. We know that. We want to keep encouraging that communication going on, and we're gonna work with the county to address the concerns. To date, we've found a new source for water. We went and the county provided a consultant that said, you know, you can withdraw this amount of water safely. But we understand the concerns out there, and we want to make sure we're working with you, and we're going to help front a lot of that bill for the infrastructure. We're investing in the infrastructure. We're investing in the community. We've changed our design dramatically. We've gone through numerous revisions to work with planning staff, to work with public works, to work with engineering, to make sure we can move this project forward, and it can be safe for the community. That's our number-one priority. I have children, and I understand it. I have solar panels on my house. We're gonna continue to work with you. We've revised the design numerous times. We're gonna keep working with the staff, and I just want to let you know, it's not done. We want to work with you, and we want to be partners in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Given the hour, there, there is much work left to be done, both by this commission and also planning staff. We have volumes of material to review, formulate our questions, our comments, and how we're gonna move forward with this. The, my proposal to the, to the commission, my fellow commission members tonight is, we are not voting on this tonight. We will be coming back to hear from the applicant again and staff, so we can discuss our questions and have those answered. The, the task for us tonight, right now, is, we have two choices. We can either leave the public comment period open, or we can move forward with closing the public comment. We've been here for quite some time now, have had over sixty to sixty-five speakers, by my count, giving the public an opportunity to comment on this very important project, application. So I have two motions prepared. The first motion is, is what, what I propose to do is close the public hearing portion, but leave the meeting open for January second, twenty nineteen. And if it pleases the fellow commission members, I'll read the motion, and we can take it up. The motion reads, "I move to continue the discussion and vote of SUP eighteen-dash-triple-zero-one to January second, twenty nineteen, to provide an opportunity for the applicant to supply the plans recommended by staff and respond to any other noted deficiencies, so planning commissioners can continue to review the application and consider the input received during the public hearing." That is the motion I am proposing at this time.
I second that motion.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I wish we would just leave it open. I'm sure there's people who haven't spoke here tonight.
Yeah, the, the-
I think you should give everybody an ample chance. There's several people went home on us.
Well, I, I understand that, but we've been here three and a half hours, and plenty of chances to comment on that. I'm willing to stay until that period of time, but I have called numerous times any other comment. And furthermore, there's gonna be additional opportunities to comment. We've got two more applications coming right behind this, and they can also provide feedback to staff on any, any of their concerns at this point.
I understand, but I can't support this.
That's fine. Any other comments?
So, Chairman, let me make sure I get this right. So, with the next two SUPs, the public would still have a chance to comment, right?
Those are two separate public hearing applications where the public will have the very same opportunity they were given tonight, yes. Any other discussion?
Yes, but you're talking about two other SUPs.
Correct.
What we're gonna do is close this, vote on this SUP, and then have two others, and do all this over again, right?
Each-
Is that what we're saying?
This, this will not be voted on tonight. We are going to-
Well, I know that.
Leave the meeting open until January second. This, this will not be voted on tonight. We are going to leave the meeting open until January 2nd.
I still wanna say...
To give you an opportunity to review all the information.
I still wanna say, I wish we would leave the public comment open also.
Let's, uh... To, to move this forward, any other comment? We have a second on the, uh...
Mr. Chair, would you clarify on your motion? Because you made a comment about leaving the meeting open and I think what you meant to do was leave open, unless I misunderstood you. You're not leaving this meeting open. You're leaving open the SUP application that is under consideration?
To allow the commission members to ask their questions and comments of the applicant.
Right, to undertake discussion and vote at a future meeting on the 2nd of January. But you're not leaving open this Planning Commission meeting?
If that's the, if that's the technicality, that's correct. I'm closing the public comment. I would wish to close the public comment part of this.
Right.
Yeah. So, the way I read the motion, I think, is correct, right?
I believe so and you probably should restate the motion for the record.
All right. So, the, the, the motion I'm proposing is, "I move to continue the discussion on, and vote on SUP 18-001 to January 2nd, 2019, to provide an opportunity for the applicant to supply the plans recommended by staff and respond to any other noted deficiencies, so Planning Commissioners can continue to review the application and consider the input received during the public hearing." And we have a second. Any other questions or comments on that? So, with that, I will, uh, call the vote. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
So, we have two noes and five ayes. The motion passes. Uh, the noes were Ms. Maddox and Mr. Thompson, if I have that correct. So, moving on to other items on the agenda, uh, new business. Any other new business?
Mr. Chairman, did you wanna consider the resolution about the meeting location?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, let me read the resolution. The point of this resolution is to move this meeting over to the Marshall Center so that we avoid, we give everybody room and a chance to, uh, meet in one place. Uh, so let me read this, uh... Uh, this resolution. So, Resolution Number 2018, it's blank, so we'll assign that number. "Location change for Planning Commission meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 5th, 2018 for SUP 18-001, which is the first of three special permit applications submitted by Sustainable Property Holdings LLC for a solar energy facility. And whereas, the application has received considerable public interest and there was a large audience for the public hearing. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission, under its bylaws, may determine the location for any of its meetings and desires to hold future meetings in which those special permit applications, special use permit applications, will be considered a larger venue to accommodate the anticipated audience. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission does hereby move the location of its next three regularly scheduled meetings on December 19th, 2018, January 2nd, 2019, and January 16th, 2019, to the Marshall Center Auditorium located at 8800 Courthouse Road, Spotsylvania, Virginia 22553. These meetings will begin at the regularly scheduled time of 7:00 PM. Planning Commission meetings will return to their regular location in the boardroom at the Holbert Building at 7:00 PM, beginning February 5th, 2019." So, I would need a motion to approve that resolution.
Correct.
So, the resolution being read, uh, I would, uh, like to make a motion to approve the resolution. We have a second. Any comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Any other new business?
No.
Yeah, that's next. So, next item on the agenda is public comment. Uh, this is comments, uh, from the public unrelated to the applications this evening. Does anybody wish to speak at this time? Unrelated to the application.
Okay, this, I have two things. One is when we have sent in emails to the Planning Commissioners and the Board of Supervisors, uh, our mail, our emails are sent forwarded to, let's say, the applicant for whatever permit or comment, uh, including our email addresses. I am not comfortable with that issue at all. Um, there was a totally separate issue, uh, that was before the county. And, um, the person that received my email address, uh, started harassing me. Ultimately, of the people who were against the issue, three of us had our computers hacked. I don't think that was coincidence. We are already receiving spam, um, and I don't know who's generating that spam. Um, but we are receiving it, those of us who were against this particular project that was before the group tonight. But I think that the, somehow, I don't care about the information going to someone else, but I don't want my personal email address. And I know that people who work for the county have a Spotsylvania dot Virginia dot U.S. uh, email address. So, it's not your personal email address that you are forced to use. So, many of us are not comfortable having our personal email addresses going out. So, if there's some way to fix that, we would appreciate it, okay? Um, just something to think about.
Thank, and just state your name again for the record.
Uh, Judith Janelle.
Thank you.
Livingston. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Thank you, everyone, uh, for coming out. At this point, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.